Did you get rain at your house?
I did.
Yeah, yes.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Looking forward to your problem.
All right.
Haven't been here in a while. What's going on again?
Are you in town for the season?
Actually, I've been here since February. But we're leaving the end of May after the big art festival.
Okay.
I want to go spend time with my grandkids.
It's a worthy expenditure.
Oh, yeah.
We'll get this through. It's not a huge agenda this time.
I don't worry about it either. Raising K West water and food.
I don't have proof. It only goes to you, but we do have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 consented agendas, and we doesn't look like we have any yet, so. My little mentee that I mentored on Monday, trailer burned down today. I'm just sick in Walnut Lane trailer park. Then I can relax.
Zachariah, are you ready? It is now 4:02. I'm calling to order this Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency special meeting. It is Tuesday, May 1, 2018. Present is Councilwoman Greg Halliday, Councilwoman Jalen Hawks, Councilwoman Evan Clapper, Councilwoman Curtis Wells, Councilwoman Mary McGann, Council Administrator Ruth Dillon, and County Clerk Auditor Diana Carroll. Thank you. Zachariah.
Mind if I just hit the lights in front of the screen so that you can see that a little better? Is that okay? Can you do that?
That's good.
Okay. So, this is a meeting of the Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency, and I'm going to not cover every single slide I have here because we only have about 15 minutes allotted for this portion of tonight's meeting. There may be some questions as well. So, just to... The purpose of today's meeting is really to bring you all up to speed on the conversations I've been having with the taxing entities in Grand County that could participate in a proposed community reinvestment project area. And I've been working with Susie Becker from the Science Bank Public Finance, Alex Blackston also from Science Bank, and Adam Long from Smith-Hart-Vickson in these conversations to make sure that all the taxing entities in the county has the information it needs. So, just a real quick reminder of what CRA is. It is a limited-purpose local government entity. The reason you all are meeting separately from the regular county council meeting is because it is considered a separate legal entity from Grand County. And you may have heard about RDAs or EDAs elsewhere. That's what we're talking about here now, the umbrella term Community Reinvestment Agency or area. So, here is really the nuts and bolts. Most of what you need to know about a CRA is in this slide. So, we're talking about using tax increment financing to support targeted desirable development in a particular area. We're not talking about new taxes. I want to be very, very clear about that. We're not talking about new taxes here. We're just talking about the allocation or the distribution of taxes. And so, the concept that is in front of us is that we've got multiple taxing entities in Grand County that collect revenue off of property values, assessed property values. And so, assuming that 2018 is the base year, so year zero, within the proposed project area, and you all passed a resolution for us to study it recently, within the proposed project area, there is a baseline assessed value of the properties that existed. Some of them are undeveloped, some of them are developed, some of them are underdeveloped. Assuming that all of the taxing entities agree to participate in the community reinvestment area, they will all continue to collect the tax revenue associated with that baseline assessed value. So, that's this area here. In the project area plan, the taxing entities who are participating agree to a project lifetime, they agree to a project budget, and what the project can spend money on. And we'll get into this a little bit later with the project plan and the draft budget that I presented to you. From year zero going forward, there's going to be new growth on the properties within that project boundary. And that new growth comes with new tax revenue. The assessed values of those properties go up, and so, there's new tax revenue associated with it. The goal of a CRA is to take a portion of that new growth tax revenue and invest it back into desirable targeted development within that project area. At the end of the project lifetime, all of the taxing entities go back to receiving their initial allocation of the tax revenue. And the idea is that all of the taxing entities do much better because the CRA has stimulated growth within the project area that has then increased the assessed value of the tax revenue.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
Because I've been asked this by two taxing entities.
...financing. All of these agreements are set forth in interlocal agreements. Once the project area starts generating revenue, then it can then spend that revenue, that money, on the projects that are set forth in the project plan. In Grand County, this is the proposed project boundary and the proposed name for it, the South Moab Community Reinvestment Area. It does include properties that are within city limits and the unincorporated county. But this is basically the proposed project area. So, all of the numbers that are in the project budget and the plan are derived from a market study that looked at likely, yet conservative estimates of new growth in these areas. What would that money be used for? I think you all are probably very familiar with this already, but it's good for us to just, you know, always keep it at the forefront. What's the goal of doing this? Why even go through the exercise? Well, the goal is to facilitate developments that seem to be broadly supported by the community and more importantly, and very importantly, supported by the city and the county councils and the other taxing entities. And so, some important expenditures would be facilitating or supporting the development of a USU Moab campus, affordable housing, maybe essential workforce housing, and economic development, economic diversification. So, translate this into a project plan, and in the draft plan that I submitted to you and that's in the public packet, you can see that these are the eligible expenditures that are identified for the CRA. Okay? So, that's in Section 6 of the draft plan. Okay? So, that's all I'm going to say about sort of the basics of a CRA and why we're doing this and what we do with it. What else is included in your packet is a draft budget worksheet. The hard copies that I just handed out to you are updated. We got some corrected taxing rates for some of the other taxing entities and some updated contribution amounts based on my conversations with the other taxing entities. And whereas in the packet that I sent you, there were five versions of a budget, just for consideration, I handed out just two because in my assessment of the conversations I've been having with the other taxing entities and their boards, these two seem to be the most likely budget scenarios. So, I just want to walk you through how to read this budget worksheet real quickly, and then I'll answer questions. And again, today's meeting is primarily just to give you an update that we're working on this and that we're making substantial progress, and we're now moving into the phase of really negotiating what this budget might look like because this drives what the CRA can do. Okay? So, taking either of these budget worksheets, let's start with the one where next to the highlighted 20 at the top, it says net present value. So, the top block in there where it says valuation, that shows you that the baseline assessed value for the properties that are in that proposed project area, the current assessed value is $38,233,000 or change. The tax revenue that the taxing entities are getting from those properties is based on that assessed value, and they will always get the tax revenue associated with that assessed value because the CRA is only concerned about new growth. So, the next line where it says incremental value, that's a cumulative assessment of new growth, the value associated with new growth, and that is based on a market study. So, the sum of those two lines gives you the total assessed value. So, the next block where it says base year tax revenues, that shows you the dollar amount today, 2018, that each of the taxing entities in this project area receive. Okay? So, that's what they can continue counting on. The next block, incremental tax revenues, that's the tax revenue associated with the new growth that will go to each of the taxing entities if they were to receive 100% of the new growth. But if you go down to the next block, there's a percentage contribution. That percentage contribution represents the share of the new growth that each taxing entity would contribute to the CRA to give it revenue to then do projects. The next block, incremental tax revenues to taxing entities, and then the block below that, incremental tax revenues to agency, that shows the percentage split of the new growth that goes to the taxing entities versus Community Reinvestment Agency. I know I'm going through this quickly, but you will have time for questions. The last... So, if you flip to the other side, going down, it says agency budget. That shows you the amount of money that would then be available to the agency, the Community Reinvestment Agency, to bring to life the projects that are listed in the project plan. There is a 5% administrative reduction and a 10% housing reduction because what the administrative cost reduction is to cover staff time and legal fees or, you know, other sort of document costs that are associated with the project. And then the 10% housing reduction is because if the CRA generates more than $100,000 in a given year, state code requires at least 10% to be spent on housing. Now, that may seem a little strange, given what I said about the goals of the project, that housing is already, you know, central to one of the goals, but it's included in here just to reflect that state law. And so, you've got 20 columns to represent a 20-year lifetime for the project. And then the first two columns on your left, total and net present value, total is just the sum over the 20 years, and then net present value is converting that sum into a net present value, meaning that there is a time value of money, and you have to discount that if you're trying to bond on something. If you're trying to bond on future revenues, you can only bond up to the net present value. So, I know that was very quick. There's a lot of information, and there's been a lot that has happened since we had our last kind of big meeting about this. So, I am open to any and all questions. I know you also have a long agenda to get to after this, so if I can answer the questions now or after.
Questions? Anyone?
From your conversations, does it seem like the agencies are leaning towards the 50-50 or the step-down?
I don't know yet. So, my next round of conversations will probably focus on these two budgets. And you can see in the second budget where it is the step-down, where rather than 50% contribution for all of the entities across all 20 years, each entity contributes 100% of the new growth for the first five years and then steps down 20% for each successive block of five years. And the very last line on that budget shows you a comparison between that budget and the first budget, and you can see that there's, you know, less money generated in the second budget because you're starting to reduce the contributions when you've got all this, you know, towards the end of the project, you know, the new assessed values get really large, and so, that's really where the reductions come in. But really, we're looking at, you know, between $5.5 and just over $5,000 in terms of total revenue. So, I'm not overly concerned about, you know, which one is ultimately chosen, but each taxing entity needs to and gets to make their sort of negotiation based on their own needs and their own projected costs and that sort of thing.
Curtis? Curtis, you have a question?
Does that answer your question? Yes.
So, the 10% housing requirement, is that just inside the boundary, I assume?
Nope. You can spend that money anywhere. So, that is the one exception for expenditures. You can spend money on housing, affordable housing, anywhere in Grand County. It doesn't have to be within the project area.
And that stipulation applies to every taxing entity within the district, I assume?
Well, it applies to the CRA because it's the CRA that would be spending the money.
Okay.
So, once the taxing entities have contributed money to the agency, the agency then decides, you know, how to allocate the money in any given development agreement.
So, how is the agency governed?
Well, so, yeah, it's a good question. So, right now, the agency is the county council, and prior to signing interlocal agreements with the other taxing entities, I will bring to you a draft set of bylaws, and it will operate, you know, very similar to the way that, you know, the municipal building authority operates and the way that the county council operates. So, it'll feel very familiar.
What's the temp... Sorry, I'm still going. What's your temperature on the different entities that can be involved? What's the... Is there good buy-in?
Well, we're this far along in the process because each step along the way has provided me more confidence that we're, you know, getting to a final agreement. Now, I can't say, you know, with 100% confidence that it's going to end up with one budget or the other, or that every single taxing entity is going to participate, but I'll tell you that the big ones, you know, are showing strong interest in this and strong support in this because it benefits all of the taxing entities. You know, by pooling our funds, you know, we can do a lot more than any of us can do individually. And because the stated goals of the CRA, I think, align with, you know, what most of the taxing entities want to see in that South Florida.
One, I have a question. So, each taxing entity has to come to an agreement on whether they use the 20 net percent value or the step-down?
So, each taxing entity has the ability to negotiate its own terms?
So, it could be...
So, different taxing entities have different terms.
So, they don't have to agree?
You know, I'm trying to communicate the benefit of keeping things simple. This is our first iteration of a CRA, and so, you know, the school district has responded well to that sort of philosophy, and I think, you know, other entities will see the value in that as well. But it is ultimately up to each entity to decide.
Yes, great.
Including the county council.
Greg?
No question. If the country experiences another recession similar to the one that we had in '89, what effect would that have on this?
Well, it may mean that the agency doesn't generate as much revenue because we don't see as much growth in this project area. And so, that's the effect that it would have. That baseline taxable value, you know, unless those baseline values were decreased, then the taxing entities will not receive any less tax revenue than they have now, and I don't anticipate that happening. We may see a leveling off of property values, but I don't see them going down. And, you know, some stipulations could be included in the interlocal agreement as far as how the taxing entities want to deal with that sort of worst-case scenario. I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but your question hints at sort of some of the strategic decisions that the CRA can make over time, and many agencies do choose to bond against future revenue at some point within their lifetime. And, you know, I've received questions about that, you know, is the county going to be bonding based on this future projected revenue? And remember, these estimates are very, very conservative. I mean, for instance, over the 20 years of this project lifetime, we've calculated only 115 new second homes, only 450 new single-family homes, but we've got entitlements already for 500 homes within this project area, and, you know, many that are under construction right now. So, my answer about bonding is let's wait and see before we make any, you know, really big decisions like that. Let's start generating some revenue. Let's see if our projections come to bear. Let's be conservative.
Yes, Curtis?
At some point soon, I'd like to see... Curious about how others see CRAs operating in the state, how they've used the revenue within the agency to satisfy that housing requirement, you know, what that looks like, what kind of projects. What do they do with the money? Do they buy land and build it themselves? How does that work? That'd be good to see.
Sure. So, I can give you just a few examples right off the top of my head. There's a lot of flexibility in how CRAs spend that money. So, as long as it can be clearly tied to an affordable housing project, then it's a green light. So, that could be impact fee waivers, that could be land acquisition, that could be infrastructure improvements, it could be subsidizing, you know, rental rates for a certain period of time, you know, whatever sort of makes sense in the given market, as long as it's tied to affordable housing, and you can show that formally, then it's okay.
Okay.
We are 10 minutes past where we were going to go, so I... Unless it's... I would suggest that council members have further questions, that they get ahold of Zachariah, but you have one that's pressing?
Just real quick. So, I was... Did they... So, the impact... Our ability to waive impact fees, did they change state laws so that if it's a certified affordable housing project, we don't have to offset that waiver? I was... I read that somewhere this year, and since this last session, was curious if you know anything about it.
I don't know... I don't know anything specifically enough to talk about tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, I can say that impacts don't go away just because you waive fees. They have to be paid for somewhere and out of something, right? But I'm not aware of that bill specifically, so let's take a look at that after.
Yeah. If we can just cover those out of our savings account, then great. They'll let us do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I'd entertain motion to adjourn the Grand County Council's special meeting.
So, move.
Second? Moved by Evan, second by Greg. Okay. Now, we will open.
Thanks, Zachariah.
Yeah. Can we wait just a minute so we can switch out?
Switch out? Your best.
So I can answer the questions now or?
Questions, anyone?
From your conversations, does it seem like the agencies are leaning towards the 50/50 or the step down?
I don't know yet. So my next round of conversations will probably focus on these two budgets. And you can see in the second budget where it is the step down, where rather than 50% contribution for all of the entities across all 20 years, each entity contributes 100% of the new growth for the first five years and then steps down 20% for each successive block of five years. And the very last line on that budget shows you a comparison between that budget and the first budget. And you can see that there's, you know, less money generated in the second budget because you're starting to reduce the contributions when you've got all this, you know, towards the end of the project, you know, these new assessed values get really large. And so, and so that's really where the reductions come in. But really, we're looking at, you know, between five and a half and just over $5 million in terms of total revenue. So I'm not overly concerned about, you know, which one is ultimately chosen, but each taxing entity needs to and gets to make their sort of negotiation based on their own needs and their own projected costs and that sort of thing.
Curtis, Curtis, you have a question?
Does that answer your question? Yes.
So the 10% housing requirement, is that just inside the boundary, I assume?
Nope. You can spend that money anywhere. So that is the one exception for expenditures. You can spend money on housing, affordable housing, anywhere in Grand County. It doesn't have to be within the project.
And that stipulation applies to every taxing entity within the district, I assume?
Well, it applies to the CRA because it's the CRA that would be spending the money.
Okay.
So once the, once the taxing entities have contributed money to the agency, the agency then decides, you know, how to allocate the money in any given development agreement.
So how is the agency governed?
Well, so, yeah, it's a good question. So right now, the agency is the county council. And prior to signing interlocal agreements with the other taxing entities, I will bring to you a draft set of bylaws. And it will operate, you know, very similar to the way that, you know, the municipal building authority operates and the way that the county council operates. So it'll feel very familiar.
What's the temp, sorry, I'm still going. What's your temperature on the different entities that can be involved? What's the, is there good buy-in?
Well, we're this far along in the process because each step along the way has provided me more confidence that we're, you know, getting to a final agreement. Now, I can't say, you know, with 100% confidence that it's going to end up with one budget or the other, or that every single taxing entity is going to participate, but I'll tell you that the big ones, you know, are showing strong interest in this and strong support in this because it benefits all of the taxing entities. You know, by pooling our funds, you know, we can do a lot more than any of us can do individually. And because the stated goals of the CRA, I think align with, you know, what most of the taxing entities want to see in that South Florida.
One, I have a question. So each taxing entity has to come into an agreement on whether they use the 20 net percent value or the step down?
So each taxing entity has the ability to negotiate its own terms?
So it could be, we could have different.
Different terms. You know, I'm trying to communicate the benefit of keeping things simple. This is our first iteration of a CRA. And so, you know, the school district has responded well to that sort of philosophy. And I think, you know, other entities will see the value in that as well. But it is ultimately up to each entity to decide.
Yes, Greg.
Including the county council.
Greg.
No question. If the country experiences another recession, similar to one that we had in eight, nine, what effect would that have on this?
Well, it may mean that the, the agency doesn't generate as much revenue because we don't see as much growth in this project area. And so that's the effect that it would have. That baseline taxable value, you know, unless those baseline values were decreased, then the taxing entities will not receive any less tax revenue than they have now. And I don't anticipate that happening. We may see a leveling off of property values, but I don't see them going down. And, you know, some stipulations could be included in the interlocal agreement as far as how the taxing entities want to deal with that sort of worst-case scenario. I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but your question hints at sort of some of the strategic decisions that the CRA can make over time. And many agencies do choose to bond against future revenue at some point within their lifetime. And, you know, I've received questions about that, you know, is the county going to be bonding based on this future projected revenue? And remember, these estimates are very, very conservative. I mean, for instance, over the 20 years of this project lifetime, we've calculated only 115 new second homes, only 450 new single-family homes, but we've got entitlements already for 500 homes within this project area and, you know, many that are on, under construction right now. So my answer about bonding is let's wait and see before we make any, you know, really big decisions like that. Let's start generating some revenue. Let's see if our projections come to bear. Let's be conservative.
Yes, Curtis?
At some point soon, I'd like to see, curious about how others see our CRAs operating in the state, how they've used the revenue within the agency to satisfy that housing requirement, you know, what that looks like, what kind of projects, what do they, what do they do with the money? Do they buy land and build it themselves? How does that work? That'd be good to see.
Sure. So I can give you just a few examples right off the top of my head. There's a lot of flexibility in how CRA spend that money. So as long as it can be clearly tied to an affordable housing project, then it's a green light. So that could be impact fee waivers, that could be land acquisition, that could be infrastructure improvements, it could be subsidizing, you know, rental rates for a certain period of time, you know, whatever sort of makes sense in the given market, as long as it's tied to affordable housing and you can show that formally, then it's okay.
Okay.
We are 10 minutes past where we were going to go. So I, unless it's, I would suggest that council members have further questions, that they get ahold of Zachariah, but you have one that's pressing?
Just real quick. So I was, did they, so the impact, our ability to waive impact fees, did they change state law so that if it's a certified affordable housing project, we don't have to offset that waiver? I was, I read that somewhere this year and since this last session, was curious if you know anything about that.
I don't know, I don't know anything specifically enough to talk about tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, I can say that impacts don't go away just because you waive fees. They have to be paid for somewhere and out of something, right? But I'm not aware of that bill specifically, so let's take a look at that after.
Yeah, if we can just cover those out of our savings account, then great. They'll let us do that.
Okay.
So, thanks.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Grand County Council's special meeting.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Evan, seconded by Greg. Okay, now we will open.
Thanks, Zachariah.
Yeah. Can we wait just a minute so we can switch out?
Switch out, you bet. I am opening the Grand County Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. Present, Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Evan Clapper, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann. Absent are Rory Paxman and Patrick Trim, Ruth Dillon, County Administrator, and Diana Carroll, County Clerk Auditor. Connie Haycock, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to unify the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes? We do not have any. So could I have a motion to postpone the approval of minutes until the May 15th?
I move to postpone the approval of March 26th, April 3rd, and April 17th minutes until the following meeting.
Second.
Motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Greg Halliday. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Ratification of bills.
I move to pay our bills. Total bills being $1,827,281.88. Total payroll, $212,685.92. Total bills and payroll, $2 million, excuse me, you got $2,39,967.80.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Greg Halli, by Curtis Wells, seconded by Evan Clapper. We will take a roll call vote. Councilman Greg Halliday.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jaylen Hawks.
Yes.
Evan Clapper.
Aye.
Curtis Wells.
Aye.
Mary McGann, yes. Do we have any elected officials report? The council administrators report.
Just briefly, I attended today the UDOT annual visit. Learned a lot about projects and funding for Grand County, which includes Moab City, Castle Valley. That was attended also by councilmembers Hawks and Halliday, as well as our road supervisor, Bill Jackson. And plenty of city council were there with the mayor and city council staff. So anyway, very informative and hope to access some of that funding. Thank you.
Good. Department reports. Judd Hill wanted to give a quick report before yours.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Wasn't on the agenda. He just asked.
Come on, just cut to the, I know you want to say it.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Two thousand.
Come on. There we go.
That was our first flight.
I wish, I got to fly one of those one time. So first flight, 7:55 this morning. Redtail Air got one.
Woo!
So.
Thank you. Working.
Redtail took three planes out to shuttle a rafting company. So three planes went out, 7:55 this morning. And then first wheels down, a private corporate jet came in about 8:15 this morning. Then the next aircraft we had was visited by the military with an Apache. Then about 1:30, had a first passenger showing up. So, and then actually arriving 15 minutes early, we had our first commercial flight.
May 1st.
May 1st, it's actually three years, our last flight of a 121 certified airline was April 30th of 2015. So, three years in a day, we get back. The largest commercial flight we've ever had come in was the Brasilia, and it held 30 passengers. And we, we have lower numbers, or when a station starts up, you expect lower numbers. This was the largest Southwest opening ever. There were 32 people on this flight. And I didn't get a picture of the first person coming off, but he was coming from, he and his wife came from Cambridge, England.
Oh, good thing we didn't have to divert them.
So, and then outgoing, we still had, I think, 10 people going out. I didn't count the numbers going out. But we're looking at lower numbers coming in, 32 today, 31 on tomorrow's flight, and then Thursday's flight, we have one with 49 so far.
Wonderful.
On individual flights. And then just quickly, that's the view from inside the terminal, looking out. Had a more, they brought in all of their staff to work it just so everyone could be there for the first flight. And then it departed on time. So made our turn. Very well make their connections. So after three and a half years, we're back.
Go get some rest. Yes, thank you. Mary.
A lot of hard work, Judd. Thank you. Thank you to the airport board as well. Thank you very much. Nice. Our next report is from SandPlats Recreation Area Report. Andrea Brand.
Thank you. Can you make sure I select this? Maybe I need help. All right, I'm getting closer. Okay. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you today. I think I have way too many slides here, and I know you have a full agenda, so I'm going to go through them quickly. Mainly, it's an overview in the first part here. So, the SandPlats Recreation Area, just as an overview, was originally set aside because of the Slick Rock Bike Trail, and it was the first national recreation trail in Utah. We're also famous for challenging four-by-four trails, motorized and non-motorized recreation on the same trails, camping. We have 124 campsites. And we are a successful partnership between the Bureau of Land Management and Grand County since 1998, managing the area in partnership. We are self-sustaining. SandPlats operates as an enterprise fund under the county, and its operating budget comes exclusively from collective fee monies. In 2017, we completed our 20th year of self-sustained operation. I won't go through the whole mission statement here, but in general, it's to ensure that the outstanding natural features of the area are protected from adverse impacts of recreational use and provides a stateable public recreation opportunities. The BLM and Grand County both aspire to utilize their combined resources and authorities to cooperatively improve conditions to manage the area. We were, SandPlats was chosen by President's Council on Environment back in 2006 as a successful, as the model partnership of federal and local governments working together in conservation. So up at SandPlats, what we do is we seek to provide facilities and management necessary to provide sustainable recreation opportunities for approximately 175,000 visitors last year. We staff the entrance station mid-February to mid-November. We have eight trailheads, 45 miles of marked trails. We added some trails last year, mileage on our trails, nine toilets, 20 interpretive kiosks at the trailheads. And then in our campgrounds, we have nine different campgrounds and toilets and kiosks there as well. And last year, we collected $613,643 in recreation fees and $8,500 in grants. You can see, we've had quite an increase in visitation, like so many things in Moab the last few years. And so from 131,000 to 146,000, you may recall, I said 175,000 in the last slide, but that is because the BLM is estimating those outfitters and event use. That's still an estimate. This is our graph of the last five years, and 2017 is at the top in pink, and it's a similar pattern, but it's still really, really shooting up in the, in the spring and the fall, especially the last two years. The fall has really been moving up. Priorities for this increase in revenue, the bulk of additional fees goes to offset rising operational expenses necessary to maintain existing levels of service to SandPlats visitors. And these fees will be used for additional staffing, maintenance of existing facilities, and help meet the demand for new facility development. So some of the things in the new facility development and improvements to existing facilities include campground upgrades in the next few years here. SandPlats has committed 100,000. The BLM will pay, has committed about 200,000 to upgrade campsites in C and D campgrounds and also to build support campsites in those campgrounds. We're also saving up to hopefully in the next few years, get our road extended another two miles. And if we are able to receive a federal grant for this, we're probably looking at about 6.7% or 134,000 in funds for that. And then we continue to do restoration work along our 20 miles of four-by-four trails. Excuse me. So this just lists the fees. So in general, it's still very reasonable, $5 a vehicle for a day, $10 for seven days, $2 if you're coming in on a bike or shuttle and motorcycle, $25 for an annual pass, there's a $5 fee if you have a vehicle trailer, and 15 per night for camping. So some of the activities that we perform up there is day-to-day operations of the entrance station, of course, during mid-March to November, through November. And this is all done, we have three full-time staff currently, four to six seasonal staff, and two high school apprentices are hired in the spring. So we staff that entrance station for orientation and safety. We maintain our trailheads. We do daily front-country patrols to check compliance at the trailheads and in the campgrounds, and back-country patrols to promote compliance and safety and assess our maintenance needs and ongoing trail maintenance and ongoing restoration of the trails areas. And there's trash pickup and removal, that's a big part of the budget, along with the toilet pumping and cleaning. And we have many kiosks and signs and our brochures, which I have some new ones here I didn't pass out yet. And the apprenticeship program, we have been doing that program since 1995. So another thing that the monies are used for is to transfer some monies, $10,000 a year, over to search and rescue. And we do provide volunteer opportunities as well to members of the community. Just as a refresher, we did a survey, 2014 to 2016, land use survey, and some of the questions that were asked was what activity they were involved in, whether it was camping or day use on the trails. And we asked them how we rated as far as customer service and our facilities and trail conditions, and suggestions for improvements. We gathered those as well. 72% of our visitors are repeat, we determined from our surveys. Day use, 33% are coming for three days, and of the campers, they're staying two to four nights. Our customer service was rated excellent, and our facilities and trails were rated good to excellent. Top likes of the area were beautiful views, quiet, close to town. You can see, there's quite a few things up there. They liked the way our campgrounds were set up, the open space. Top dislikes, motorized use, noise, so there's the opposite, depends where you are up there. Speed and resource damage, toilets, generator use. Top additional desired services, water, more campsites, RV and tents separate or generator separate use. Okay, so I'm just going to pull a few of these out as we go through. You were given this in your packet. So the ones I want to pull out is that last year, the council and BLM approved some travel plan changes out on Hell's Revenge and Porcupine. You might remember that. We completed that work last, last spring. And then over the course of last year, we updated a number of trailhead kiosks with improved maps and information. We came out with an interpretive trail guide for one of our trails, our hiking trails, this is a mile-long trail called the Indian Trail. We completed some fencing projects on fins and things and some select spots. Another part, another thing that occurred was we got permission from the sheriff to lower the speed limit to 15 miles per hour. Usually on public lands, the speeds are 25 miles per hour. A few years ago, we got it lowered to 20, and then last year, we got it lowered to 15 for safety and to try to preserve our resources, keep the speed down, just stop the limit a little bit, the tearing up of the trails. With Trail Mix, a new trail was built called the Juniper Hiking Trail, which is six miles up the road from the entrance station. And this was built in partnership, the BLM and Trail Mix and SandPlats. And this is one of the views in the wintertime from the trail, looking up to the mountains. And so that's Scott from Trail Mix out there and Todd from the BLM putting in some posts. And we, it's been completed this spring with, with the signs, and it's, people are really liking it. It's really nice to be able to send them to another hiking trail. Some other highlights, some projects we completed last year. We added shade structures in our two group campsites. We had a contractor, I came before you folks, for approval for that, of course. And Claude Lawson built these beautiful shade structures here in E1 and in E10. And people are really enjoying those and good feedback on that. The Hell's Revenge entrance, we've had this problem for the last few years with increased erosion, where we have dirt and cobble and, you know, gravel coming into the parking lot regularly. So in December, we had that concreted by a contractor, local contractor. And so that's the ramp being concreted. And then for, oh, already moving into 2018. Okay, so just some, some plans for this year. We are going to, well, we've completed the Hell's Revenge four-by-four trailhead exit project, and Slick Rock Bike Trail dotted roots are almost marked. And let me go through here, because I have pictures of all of these. So I came before you, I think it was in January, you remember, I'm sure you remember, we have high volume of use. So on the fin there at the entrance, with 66% of people exiting at the trailhead, we had a problem there with them both using the same fin. Now we're using separate fins. And if you look in the lower right, you can see a vehicle coming out on that gravel road, and I have better pictures of that. So here's from the other side of the fin, if you were exiting, you would be going off to the right there. And this is the top of it. You can see on the left side, there's some of the, where the blasting occurred. We had a local contractor do that as well. And this is looking down on that gravel road, coming right into the parking lot. And the road department, Grand County Road Department, did this work for us as far as the gravel road. They did a great job and did it really quickly, and we transferred money over to them for that. And then this is looking back. And the comments have been overwhelmingly positive from the outfitters, from the, on Facebook, when I posted it all along. I mean, we had over 2,000 people reached, and it was, it's been really, really a success. People are really happy with it. I haven't heard one complaint about that. So, well, and then this is the current exit ramp where that gravel road feeds into it. We will be concreting that this summer. So both sides will be concreted so that we don't have that problem in the parking lot. We're going to build a shade structure in the Fins and Things parking lot, along the same lines as the one in the campgrounds. And this is a picture of it at Slick Rock. We've got two of them at Slick Rock. We need to have one at Fins and Things for the users there, so that they can picnic or have a cool place to wait for members to return from the trail ride, you know, from the group. We're going to continue to improve the camping experience at SandPlats. So, well, and then this is the current exit ramp where that gravel road feeds into it. We will be concreting that this summer. So both sides will be concreted so that we don't have that problem in the parking lot. We're going to build a shade structure in the Fins and Things parking lot along the same lines as the one in the campgrounds. And this is a picture of it at Slick Rock. We've got two of them at Slick Rock and we need to have one at Fins and Things for the users there so that they can picnic or have a cool place to wait for members to return from the trail ride, you know, from the group. We're going to continue to improve the camping experience with Sandblatt's. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to do improvements to 28 existing campsites and add probably 30 new campsites. Some of them would be group sites. And money has been set aside for 2019 to 2020 with the BLM's funds. And this gives really a, sorry it's so far away, but an overview. It's campground C and campground D. So this is a mile in where the road turns to dirt on both sides of the road. And we want to be sure to pay attention to views from those campsites and also the views that people see from the road to kind of reduce what you see from the road a little bit as well. We'll continue to work with the road department, local Jeep clubs to assess and improve select sections on Fins and Things and Hell's Revenge Trails with additional fencing and maybe some, and some boulders. And then we're happy over at the senior center right now, but we'll see what happens in the future. We have moved into, the picture on the right is the new BLM shed there at the corner of Mill Creek and Sandblatt's where we used to be. We are in that bay on the, on the right there for stor-, for storage and yeah. So it's working well. We have our UTVs in there and, and tools and brochures and such. And then the dotted route, which is addition to the Slick Rock Bike Trail that was suggested in 2008. It was approved last year, late last year. And on this map, it is about three miles and it is this right here. So from Icebox down and joining into the main Hell's Revenge and Slick Rock Bike Trail. And had volunteers working on that, including Ruth. And Cliff Coons from Ride With Respect and Dave Olson, who originally visioned the trail and Tom Dillon. And so it's, I'll get out there this week and look at it again. And then just to let you know, nothing, as far as I know, nothing's really moving on this, but the Big Burrito Trail, Mountain Bike Trail is a Trail Mix project. It is in court, there's a stay on it. I believe SUEA is suing them. And so we'll see if any, you know, what happens with that, but I just wanted to let you know that's still out there in the air. So in summary, Sandblatt's operates in successful partnership with, with the BLM and the county. We are self-sustaining, our visitation continues to increase and our improvements are made. And we have more to be made in the future with our fee monies and grants and through the BLM partnership. Thank you.
Very informative.
Questions? Yes, Jaylen?
Do you have a feel for how much money is generated through the campsite reservations?
Yeah, reservations.
Wow.
Oh, I didn't mention that. Recreation.gov. Yes, I, I forgot about that. So this year, we went to Recreation.gov and we generated, it generated about $13,000 so far. And so because we're on Recreation.gov, you know, everyone knows about us now. So those two group campsites are full every night of the week. And that was not the case before. I mean, they were full the weekends and some weekdays, but then they're full all through the summer. So I'm glad we have shade structures there. And we did raise, you might recall, you know, we brought the fee up a little bit because we were meeting the amenities that the BLM has in their group campsites. So it went up $10.
Thank you. Any further questions? Very thorough report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good job up there.
Pretty exciting. We do not have any agency reports. We are now to citizens to be heard. This is the section of the agenda where people who want to talk, speak on an item that is not on the agenda. If you're not on the agenda and you have something you want to share, this is your opportunity to do so. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda, you fill out this form and put the letter of the, that you want to talk on. During citizens to be heard, people have three minutes there to come up. They have a choice of sitting at the table or at the podium. It's important that you state your name and you keep, keep your comments to three respectful minutes. And so are there any citizens to be heard? Yes, come forward and state your name.
My name's Jared West.
Yes, Jared West.
So I'm here with Representative, General Manager, Pacific Steel and Recycling out of Colorado. I've been working with him for several years now with iron recycling and automotives and the big iron. And we have a proposal for the Grand County, which I spoke to a few council members about as far as using the grounds that are on the intersection corner between Ken's Lake Road and Spanish Valley Road, which Grand County owns out there. I've noticed in my lifetime of being here, the demand for recyclable iron and the place to dispose of it. And I've seen several junk yards make messes get cleaned up, make messes get cleaned up. We understand that this is a messy process, but it's, it's a demanding process in our community because there's always going to be dead cars and there's got to be somewhere to take them. And the way I look at it, it's Grand County is sitting on the perfect chunk of dirt for a process that could make not only themselves a bunch of money for the development that they choose to do. It would also help the community to clean up. It would increase property values by getting rid of dirty lots next to clean lots. It'll give the community someplace to go. And I figured if we went at it, at a reasonable approach of rewarding the citizens that contributed to this for the efforts, I think it would go a lot faster. My concerns in this is the radioactive material in the valley from all the uranium mines. Making sure that we have a Geiger counter or something so we can't get caught with radioactive material. And then the length of time it would take to acquire the amount of iron that Pacific would be willing to come in to process to make sure it's all gone. I mean, it's got to be profitable for everybody or it's not worth it. So with the, with the council's backing of permission to use the land for storage and the backing of the council to help persuade property owners into donating or contributing or working with us to get these properties cleaned up would be immensely helpful. And then the sooner it's done, the sooner it's over with. And then Pacific comes in and they do their thing.
Yeah, so Pacific Steel and Recycling, we operate in nine of the western states and Canada. We specialize in metal recycling of any type as well as a steel service supply centers. We're an employee-owned company, been in business since the 1880s. But it's such a gem here in Moab. I recreate here very often, come over from Grand Junction. And one thing that I notice is there, there's, there's a lot of junk metal around, right? And this would provide a way to clean that up. And I would bring my resources over to help in that regard, like balers, car crushers, excavators, big end dumps, where we can haul those materials off and help promote this wonderful valley. It's really a gem and help clean it up and increase the property values along the way with, you know, because oftentimes you'll see a castle amongst a junkyard right next door. And this could provide a way to try to make it, clean up the whole valley and give the citizens a way to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I gave you over three minutes because two people were talking. So thank you.
Would you guys like a packet or a flyer?
Yes.
So in here, I just did a quick summary. And there's some pictures in here and I apologize if they're black, it might not work. But they are pictures of what I'm using now for improvement personally. So I'm personally invested in this with Pacific. And these are locks that I've cleaned up, written on, paid people to clean up. So not only did the property owners receive funding, there's a next one, they also got the yard cleaned up. And they're out of order, but you can see in context, the messy ones versus the clean ones. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be in touch. Thank you. Is there any other citizens to be heard? Yes, come forward.
Hi, I'm Don Obeluck and I've got a prepared statement that I'd like to read. Curtis Wells has failed in his responsibility to the county council by deliberately withholding vital information about House Bill 224 because of his partisan leanings. Although he was elected under our current nonpartisan form of government, he is apparently incapable of carrying out his duties without injecting his own Republican politics. In doing so, he has failed the citizens of Grand County who have affirmed three times and by wide margins, our form of government. He has said that his efforts in support of House Bill 224 were made as a private, private citizen. But it's clear from a statement made by UAC President Cindy Bullock, referring to Curtis as Councilmember Wells, that she considers his presence to be an official one at their meetings. Curtis's comments in defending his actions are very revealing in an excerpt from last week's TI. Quote, "This idea that somehow I have an obligation to ask for permission or notify my political opponents and the people that don't support me, that didn't vote for me, that's ridiculous," end quote. As one of Curtis's at-large constituents, I am asking that the council vote to remove him from his positions on the Utah Association of Counties and from the Association of Local Governments. Both of these assignments require a representative who can lobby for the interest of all Grand County residents. Sadly, Curtis has demonstrated that he is interested in representing only those residents who vote Republican. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this important matter.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our next agenda item. We are moving to general action items, discussion and consideration approving proposed job descriptions for a new grant-funded position, victim coordinator for San Juan County for the Children's Justice Center and approving funding and recruitment of the position pending grant award from the Attorney General's Office, John West, Human Resource Director, and Connie Haycock, Children's Justice Center Program Director. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have Connie give us kind of a brief background why this position, she feels is necessary as well as I feel is necessary. But a lot of the background isn't included in the information that was given to you. So she can do a quick synopsis if you don't mind.
All right, the Children's Justice Center is a safe and comfortable place where children and their caregivers come and they meet with specially-trained law enforcement and Child Protective Service investigators and talk about the abuse that they've experienced. We record the interview and then it is held as evidence in case there's an upcoming criminal case. And so this is a program of the Attorney General's Office. The funding comes from the legislature.
Thank you, Jaylen.
Individual grants that, that I write and then donations. And so the CJC here in Moab opened up, I think in 1999. I started work there in 2003. And because the model is so successful, San Juan County Law Enforcement and Child Protective Services started bringing their kids up for interviews and asking for the training so that they could do the interviews. The FBI started bringing children from the reservation of the Utah Strip up for, to do their forensic interviews at the CJC here in Moab as well. Well, I saw that that was a huge burden for travel for children and families, not only from Blanding, Bluff, but from Ana, the Monizuma Creek. And so I approached the AG's office and with the idea of opening up a satellite CJC in Blanding that could be used for those children and families in that area. And with a little bit of extra funding, they said yes. And with the donation of the building and utilities from the San Juan County Sheriff's Office, we opened up in 2012 a satellite Children's Justice Center. We have the same recording equipment down there that we have in Moab, which is a result of a donation. And so since 2012, I have been traveling back and forth between Moab, Blanding, Monizuma Creek and Ana. And that's a lot of travel. And it's, I can't always go to Blanding if they have an emergency interview, but someone needs to be there to be a victim coordinator, a victim advocate, to assist in the interviews. And right now, there's a lot of federal Voca funding, Victims of Crime Act, and the Utah Office of Victims of Crimes, I think has, was awarded over a million dollars. And so I thought I might as well tap into that funding source to create a victim coordinator position in Blanding to, under the supervision of the director here in Moab, to do down there what I do here, to assist in the interviews, to assist with the families. We do assessments for referrals for services, that we follow up with the families. We monitor the criminal case, we monitor their counseling, any needs. We follow them up sometimes six months down the road to provide support and see if at that time, they've identified new needs. And so that's, I wrote the grant and this all hinges on being awarded the grant. I think we'll probably get it. They came down and met with me and it felt like actually solicited my application. And so we should, I think we'll hear the end of May as to whether we've gotten it or not. John helped, John and I worked together on a, a job description and that's where we're at. I, the grant was due April 17th. And so Chair McGann came to my office and sat down with me and went through the grant. It's an online grant application. And she went through each part and the areas that required her signature. We printed off and, and she signed it and I scanned it back into the grant. And so she, she went through it with a fine tooth comb. And so that's where we're at.
Hopefully you can.
Great job.
Does that cover it?
Yeah, so, yes.
Thanks for taking all that on. I think it's valuable work and work that needs to be done. I was just a little curious about a San Juan physician being funded by Grand County, or not funded, but under the Grand County.
In the state, we have the main, there are, I think are 18 Children's Justice Centers. And then in some of the, the very rural, smaller populated areas, we have satellite centers. The funding is a direct appropriation from the legislature and it goes to the program with the Attorney General's Office. And then the AG's office has a contract with Grand County. And I bring that contract to you each year and it's signed. Within that contract, it also provides for the satellite CJC in Blanding. There's not enough funding in the overall program to have an individual CJC in Blanding and have a separate contract with San Juan County. And so as a, as a contribution to this position, San Juan County has provided a building, all utilities, internet, a vehicle and fuel for this person. And, and, and so that's why it's, did I answer that well enough? It's, it's a state program that's contracted to certain counties. And then it, it, we outreach to try and provide services to all children in the state. to try and provide services to all children in the state.
I think it's valuable.
Yes, Jaylen?
Great job description, guys. I liked it. And also, it was nice to see the entire grant in the packet.
Pretty extensive.
Typically, we've had just the cover sheet, so that was very helpful to understand what it is you're doing. My question is, it looked to me like that victim advocate will also, with children being their focus, be able to help other victims of crime in that area?
Yes, yes.
All right, good.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve the proposed job description for the new position of victim coordinator in San Juan County effective July 1st, 2018, with salary and benefits paid for by VOCA Grant.
Motion by Evan Clapper. Seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any further discussion? I, when I went to Connie's office and got to spend that time going through the grant, we also got, she shared with me her experience in San Juan County, and it was very moving, and I can't explain. I left that, I left her office feeling like we were doing really good work on behalf of children. So I highly suggest all council members, if you have an opportunity, to call her and sit down and just visit about what they're doing in San Juan County. It's very impressive. Thank you. Any further comments?
What they're doing in Grand County.
And what they're doing in Grand County. You are right. Yes. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Connie.
Madam Chair, because we give our council reports always at the tail end of the meeting, when there's rarely any members of the public left, I move we reassign the council reports item to the top of the agenda to take place immediately, give the public an opportunity to hear our council reports.
Did you move to do that?
I did.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
For this meeting to take place.
Well, we were, Ruth and I talked about at our, at the agenda review, that perhaps we should look at moving the council reports up, because they're important, and so often we are so burned out by the end of the meeting, we aren't as efficient at reporting, so.
To clarify, I mean this meeting right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's been discussed to even relook at where we put it. Put it more with the elected official report, because we have elected officials. So any further discussion? All in favor of moving council reports from item, no, not an item, you, from the bottom of the agenda to below, between item E and F. All in favor? I'm going to get my council report out.
Okay, Councilman Holliday?
Well, as, as the county administrator said, attended the UDOT annual visit today. I've attended those for the last number of years. It's interesting, gave us a lot of good ideas on additional funding to pay for not only roads, but also potentially for trails and bicycle paths. So that was, that was some good information that was brought out. What have we done since the last time? Attended the BLM meeting, the 25th of April, talking about some road access, the status of some existing roads around the Mill Canyon area, talked about those, those areas, and some other access issues in that area. And that's all I got for now.
Thank you. Jaylen?
I farmed out most of my meetings, because it's had like three weeks of out of town here and back. Be there again. So the one I was able to go to was the Housing Authority Southeastern Utah Meeting, and you hear his report twice a year, or maybe it's moved to once a year now. It's, you know, doing some phenomenal work. The latest is getting the Wingate Village up and running. And we have their, Zachariah got a CBPG grant to do infrastructure for that project, and so that will be moving forward. They're looking at, they're still working on the senior housing project because of the tax situation, where the low-income housing tax credits are worth quite a bit less than when the grant was submitted. They're either looking at ending the plans a little bit, or just seeing what their other options are. So I also went to a National Conference for Behavioral Health, as a board member of the Four Corners Behavioral Health Board, and that was very interesting, heard a lot of great speakers, and even new respect, heightened respect, because I've always had a respect for the work that Four Corners does in our communities, and I was really glad I was able to attend that.
Most of my meetings are stacked at the beginning of the month, so not a lot to report. Seeing our wonderful trail mix representatives here reminds me that, as you know, we approved those grants at our last meeting, and we'll hear from them later about the vehicle requests, but there are some exciting new trail proposals off in the Gemini Bridges area that I'm excited about. I also had the pleasure of attending a trail work day with those guys and the high school mountain bike team, and they're doing a great job out there. And you double-dipping?
Yeah. I just want to say that I saw trail mix at work, too, on the Pike Tree Trail, and that was great.
The mosquito abatement is up and running, so the seasonal staff is in place, and they are busy getting at it. And just a little thing to have on the radar is, they are hoping to replace their communications for the field as well. And with our kind of general county overhaul with the sheriff and the emergency response, it might be nice if there's some kind of way that they could piggyback on some of that new communications coming online. Besides that, we just got our Sam Flatch report. We're going to hear from EMS later. And I don't believe, I feel like there was something else, but if we're all double-dipping, I'll come back around.
Okay. Curtis Wells?
Well, I just got back from a 10-day vacation in Hawaii, so I enjoyed that. And I needed that.
I didn't let the council know that.
So I enjoyed that. Before I left the notable meetings, I represented the Grand County with the mayor of the city of Moab at the last Transportation Commission meeting with our district representative, Rick of UDOT, to present our hotspot funding requests related to the bypass project and then the parking structure in the city of Moab. And we got really good reviews from everyone, and that process is ongoing, but that was a pleasure. And I attended two separate meetings with the mayor of Moab and Ben Riley with the Housing Authority, just to discuss affordable housing, as these developments are starting to happen, and we look at assured housing policies. So those were, those were good opportunities and good meetings, and I look forward to contributing in that. My water board meeting was rescheduled for my vacation, so I did not stick around for the water board meeting. I went on vacation. I do want to take a minute to address House Bill 224, because there's a lot going on, and this is something that I've been forthcoming about as my involvement. But there's a brief misunderstanding of exactly how this works. I was appointed to this Association of Local Governments by this body, as your representative on that body. That body appointed me to the Board of the Utah Association of Counties. The Board of Directors of the Utah Association of Counties does not handle legislative issues. It manages that organization. On legislative issues, and the big reason why I've been so forthcoming with my involvement is, it's very inappropriate to blame the Utah Association of Counties if you disagree with the bill. But the Utah Association of Counties, if you, you know, attend the legislative process, they hold legislative committee meetings every Thursday, where they discuss bills, and any elected official from any county is welcome to attend and, and vote, and take a position. And I, I've chosen to attend those meetings. I haven't done so because I'm on the Board of the Utah Association of Counties. I've, I've done so because it's important. And, and that's the area where those things are addressed. And so, you know, this narrative that somehow I betrayed the county, frankly, I disagreed. But, but one point further, February 1st, I was up on the Hill before this bill was press released, and before I'd even been introduced to committee titled Form of Government, I placed the call to my council chair, Mary McGann, notified her there's a Form of Government bill. It doesn't appear to impact us right now, but it will evolve as these bills do. Now, I know that Councilwoman McGann disagrees with me on the subject of Form of Government. This has been one of my biggest issues, and it's, it's a debatable issue. But the fact that I placed that call before, frankly, anyone else had known about it, and there wasn't a press release yet, and it hadn't even gone to committee, in my opinion, with all due respect, is much more than, that should be requested of me. If, if that's not a courtesy, I don't know what is. That's not my obligation. I don't serve as the liaison to legislative matters for the state of Utah. I represent my constituents. I was duly elected. I don't answer to the body, I answer to the people. And I make the decisions based on what's best for the people. But if there's any, for the record, this idea that I did not notify a member from the body, if I place a phone call to the chair of the council before the bills even hit committee and say there's a Form of Government bill, you better keep an eye on it, what else am I to do? Am I to hold everybody's hand that's not on the Hill? I do the best that I can. I was in DC, two weeks later, the bill passed the House and the Senate while I was still, you know, out of town at the NACO conference. And so we may disagree on the issues, but this idea that there's some kind of sneakiness, or there's some kind of failure to follow by some kind of rules, if we disagree on issues, this is politics, folks, but we do have good working relationships. And out of anyone up here, I'm more than proud of the community-first positions that I've taken. So with all due respect, if you don't agree with the bill, I understand, but my integrity and my character is sound, and that's very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And he did give me that call, and when the bill was first brought out, it was pretty benign. I know Councilman, Councilwoman Hawks was also following it, and it was pretty benign. And when I left to Washington DC, it was still quite, just wasn't going to affect our form of government. It wasn't, anyway, so, that being said, I, let me see, where should I start? I'll start with the Green River, Colorado. We met with the Green River, Colorado people that just take care of the mud, you know, that's underneath the water. And I was with Councilman Greg Halliday was also there. It was Sovereign Lands, and that's how they call it, but they say they, we just take care of what's under the water. But what's interesting is, they did a trade with some of their land that's under Lake Powell with a sitla, and they have some land over by Dalton Wells. And they're very interested in working with the county to create something similar to the Slick Rock Trail, you know, our Slick Rock Partnership. But rather than partnering with the BOM, we'd be partnering with the state and creating some type of, because there's so much camping and such going on, on that piece of property, and it's getting trashed, and there's some real problems. So they said they are going to look at their calendar, get back with us, and then they're going to come, and we will probably do a workshop to look at the possibility of creating another partnership with the state as opposed to the Bureau of Land Management. I was quite excited about that. It was very interesting. They also talked about their concerns of the, the damage that the jet boats are doing to the banks on the Colorado River, that they're seeing real erosions in the area where they consistently do the quick turn, and they're concerned, and they're trying to figure out how to mediate, you know, deal with that, so that people can still have a good source of income, but yet at the same time not destroy the, what they're getting their income from. So that was very interesting. The solid waste has been putting on workshops at the library on Thursdays to talk about recycling and to educate the public of the many, you know, just, it's a very complicated issue. And so they put it into four, three. And this Thursday at 6:00 at the library, they're going to be doing it, having another one on electronics, and, you know, how to dispose of electronics, and also waste that is contaminated and such. So it should be really good. I've been very, we've been advertising it a lot, but very few people are showing up. You know, at the last one, there was only like six people, even though there was this great presentation. So she, we are, we, it is being filmed, and so that people can, and then it's going to be shortened and put on our website, so that people can go and look, because it teaches you a lot about how to appropriately recycle, and the, the choices, because it's not a straight line. You know, it's complicated, and it shows how it's complicated, because you have to measure carbon print according to this, according to that. Main thing is, don't throw away your aluminum cans, because they are worth money. It's like throwing away a quarter. So that was interesting. The cemetery district was really, I think you've heard me talk for over a year about how Green River wanted to take over the Elgin Cemetery, and I kept going, well, why do they want to do that? They've got such a good deal. And then I thought, well, it's because they want to take half the cemetery and make a commercial property out of it. And so I, so we did an agreement that if we sold them the cemetery, it had to be used as a cemetery forever. It finally got done, we did all the paperwork, sold the cemetery. Last cemetery meeting, they showed up and asked if we'd give them some money to help take care of the cemetery. So they had no idea what they were doing. So anyway, that was pretty, that was, we were pretty, we thought that was quite hysterical. The homeless committee met, and we now have a database so that we can keep track, enter and better serve our homeless population, also to make sure there's not a bunch of double-dipping. And there are 10 agencies, and you will find that we had, we took out of some, what was the name of that fund we took it out of? Anyway, to pay so that it could be put in a situation that it is very hard to break, you know, that it's protected, protected information. We'll cover that later in the meeting. The Canyonlands Partnership Meeting was fascinating, very fascinating. I won't go through everything, because there's too much. It's, it was a very fun meeting. I thought, our water study is considered one of the best water studies that's been done. It's being held up as a, one to be looked at for other It's being held up as a, one to be looked at for other people to follow. I'm trying to find the things that will mostly direct with us. Visitation is up in areas around, yeah, 50% this year in the BOM lands. It's not up that high in our parks. There's only like 15 to 20% there, but visitation in Moab Springs up 50% on BOM land. And they have now hired an archaeologist for the state, which is good news, because we can't remember what year we ceased to have that position, and now we have someone that will be directly watching that. So, I can't, I'm trying to think of something else. So, that's a big meeting. You go to them. I mean, if I was going to report on that, it would take too long. So, that pretty much concludes my report. Yes.
Not on that particular one. I did fail to mention that I do attend the Budget Advisory Board meetings, and I would just like to thank this body for creating that board, because I think it's huge. I think we're getting a lot of good work done. I'm always disappointed when a meeting's canceled. That's kind of nerdy of me, I know, but I think we're getting some good work done. I think that can be, as a whole, will be pleased.
Thank you. Yes, Greg?
I have an alibi.
What?
A couple of things. One, the well that was being drilled out of the cemetery along Castle Valley, they're down 200 feet, and all they're getting is about 25 gallons a minute. They needed 100 gallons a minute to bring it up to what the fire department needed. So, it's good that we changed the rating on the CIV list, because they may end up having to buy that lot after all.
Yes.
Also, on a side note, last week, I completed all the requirements to be another qualified wildland firefighter again for this year.
Congratulations.
I remember my double dip.
You double dip.
Yeah. May 12th, there's an archaeological and historical statewide celebration going on, and so there's going to be representatives at Sago Canyon, Wolf Ranch, and Arches National Park, and they're going to be there to give tours and plenty of information. So, if you make your way out there, those will be hosted. And also, if you remember through the special service, the Recreation Special Service, we awarded a grant for the skate trailer and the roller skating, and they hosted their second community skate night, and it's a lot of fun, and it was very, very well attended. And so, that was another feel-good thing that I had.
That's out at the arena.
Yeah.
Looks really fun, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, so.
Okay. We completed with council reports?
We better stop now.
We gotta stop. We're too, we've got too much energy. Yes.
I just wondered if you guys had any.
I'm planning a vacation. I can tell you that. I'll tell you more next time.
Okay. Okay, let's move to.
Did you take one last year?
Action item F, approving proposed data release agreement. User, independent research, Dr. Tim Graham of Moab, Utah. Identifier, user of the University of Utah for the purpose of performing analysis to determine patterns of Tamarus beetle movement populations, dynamics, effects of beetles on tamarus, and the like. Tim Higgins.
May I make the motion?
Since most of you probably know.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve the proposed data release agreements for release of the weed department's tamarus beetle research data to, one, Dr. Tim Graham of Moab, Utah, and two, Phoebe McNeely and Michael Mason of the University of Utah for analysis, for reports, and educational presentations, and for peer-reviewed journal publications, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Evan Clapper. Okay, open to discussion.
I don't have any comments, unless you guys.
Any reason we shouldn't have done?
I mean, we've just been doing this for quite a while, and, you know, this is part of working on a report for the Southeastern Recurrent Partnership. And we've done, Ry Robinson's done our part with that, but we need to do the analysis part of it, and that's part of what this is doing, as well as any other papers that they can be able to come up with for that, to be able to get published.
Any questions? And I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously, five to zero.
Thanks, Tab.
Thank you, Tab.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Item G, adopting proposed resolution to establish the Grand County Emergency Medical Service Special Service District, appointing individuals to serve on the Administrative Control Board, and naming each initial term and approving the notice of impending boundary actions, certifying to the Lieutenant Governor that all requirements to create the districts have been met. Ruth Dillon, County Administrator, Councilmember Clapper, and Hawks.
Okay, this is one of the last steps in a process that you all have been involved in for a good while. EMS Director Andy Smith is here, as is a big crew of EMS, yoo-hoo. I will speak just a little bit about process. So, what, before you is tonight, the opportunity to do board appointments and to determine whether you want the five that were originally discussed, or what was discussed at the last council meeting, five to seven. We have been in contact with Castle Valley Town and Moab City, and they both also do want to have a seat on this board, so we could have it, we could actually tonight, you all could fill this board with three of the citizen slots, one of your own, and then the city council member would send their own, and the Castle Valley would send their own, so that we don't have to have those names for this. And these names go into the resolution, should you choose to establish this district tonight. The other item before you to be determined, well, let me just say one more thing about the placement of the appointments. For the, the way the resolution is written, there would be two individuals who would have two-year terms, and so we have three qualified citizens applicants who you've already interviewed, and then we have one vacant position for a citizen who is very interested but will not be registered as a voter anytime soon, real soon, anyway, not soon enough for this. So, we could, so you would draw lots, in other words, just for two names, and you have to tell me whether you want to include the vacant slot in order to determine who will serve two years. The remaining ones would serve four years. And then the council, the various council members would serve term of office, the way this is written. So, that's one thing. And the other thing before you to approve tonight would be the notice to the Lieutenant Governor basically stating that all requirements have been met to create this district. Pending receipt of one item, and that's called a new entity letter, that is required by the Utah Retirement Systems Office. We have, Andy has prepared the, responded to the questionnaire that they need in order to get us this letter. All this to say, if all this were to be adopted tonight, the certificate of creation could actually occur during May, assuming we can get the resolution process quickly enough to get it numbered and signed. And so, that would mean the board, the board members that are placed here could begin meeting as soon as that certificate of creation is issued. And the state has only 10 days, once they receive all the materials from our office, as long as there are no questions or concerns, they have to give us a certificate of creation within those 10 days if they find that all has been met. So, other than that, I believe I reported last time, and this time I included it as exhibits to the resolution, the inclusion resolutions that Moab City and Castle Valley have adopted separately that states that they want their boundaries to be included in this Grand County EMS Special Service District boundary, which is all of Grand County. We do have a map certified by the surveyor and a legal description of our county boundaries. We have everything ready to go. Also, we had two protest letters received, as you know, earlier on. They are in your packet, and one unslisted support letter. If we had had more like, I forget what it is, 25% of the voters or something like that would have had to be enough to consider adequate protest. So, I will turn it over to our council members Hawks and Clapper, or whatever you all might want to add.
Do we need to lump all of this together in one motion? Or could we have a motion to adopt the resolution and then a separate one for the makeup of the board?
Anything you want.
So, how is the resolution written now, five to seven, or is that?
It was increased to seven, if I remember right when I read it.
So, it is in your packet, and I left the underline there to show what was different from what was discussed last time, and this is the first time you've actually seen the resolution? I'm looking for it.
Which section? Oh, yeah.
On your iPad, it's page 24.
Gotcha. So, it's got the seven.
So, it says five to seven.
Five to seven.
Where's Andy? I saw him.
I'm good.
Well, that gives you the leeway to have someone from Castle Valley and someone from the city, which is a good thing.
If I might just add, too, that legal review did come back complete, that all the state code citations in the resolution were met with their satisfaction. And Andy has reviewed all this with me, so we feel very confident about it if you all want to do this.
And I guess my final question is, can this board begin meeting even though one citizen member will be missing for a while?
Well, yes, as long as you state five to seven is your number of board members. This is how the healthcare district is set up.
Should we figure out the dates on these appointees and do it as one big motion?
So, we have to draw lots.
Okay, so.
Do we put the vacant one in here, is my question?
Let's.
I would put the vacant on the two-year.
Yeah, I would leave the vacant for this, right?
Well, what we're drawing for is the two-year.
Oh, okay.
So, but if you want to say the vacant one is a two-year, we can do that. You can do whatever you want.
Let's say the vacant's a two-year, because I like the candidates we have.
And by two-year, we mean ending December.
Expiring 2020.
2020, right. And so, I do want to point out, in the resolution, I had wrote that, written, excuse me, I'd written that there's a partial year would mean one full year, but that would change this to 2019 if we were to get that certificate of creation resolution. So, I'm going to recommend that that be stricken from the resolution, that one sentence that says a partial year is one year.
So moved.
We don't need that in there, okay? So, okay. So, Diane, you want to pick?
Oh, Diane.
Go, Diane.
Who's going to be the two-year? Two-year.
That'd be Elizabeth Tubbs. All right, so that means Ronnie Schultz, if you choose to appoint tonight, and Jason Taylor would have the four-year appointments. And then we need a city council member appointment as well tonight.
Tonight, we would need one?
Yes, so that we can, well, you don't have to, but it would be nice if you want to put that in the.
Not city, she means county.
County, sorry.
Oh, gotcha.
Sorry, I didn't mean county. I'm sorry, I don't know why I said that.
Sure. But you have to make the motion.
Okay. I move to adopt the proposed resolution to establish the Grand County Emergency Medical Services Special Service District, and to appoint, effective upon the date of issuance of the certificate of creation by the Lieutenant Governor, the following individuals to serve on the Administrative Control Board of said district with the following stated initial terms. Terms ending December 31, 20, to be filled by an unknown, and the second term, the second member whose term ends at December 31, 2020, Elizabeth Tubbs. Term ending December 31, 2022, to be filled by Jason Taylor. And finally, the term to end December 31, 2020, to be filled by Ronnie Schultz. Grand County Council member spot to be filled by Evan Clapper, Councilman Clapper, with Moab City member to be determined, and Castle Valley Town Council member to be determined. Further, be determined. Further, I move to approve the proposed notice of impending boundary action, certifying to the Lieutenant Governor that all requirements to create the district have been met, pending receipt of the new entity letter from the Utah State Retirement Office, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Evan Clapper. Discussion.
And you will delete that one sentence about a partial year being one year. Thank you.
Please add that to the resolution. We're taking one.
The motion.
The motion.
Thank you.
Discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? We have four in favor. Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Evan Clapper, Mary McGann, all opposed. We have one opposed, Curtis Wells.
We are now moving to item H, midterm, mid-year budget request for the use Trail Mix Vehicle. Zachariah Levine, Community and Economic Director.
Okay, so, with us today, I've got Matty Logowitz and Tyson Swayze with Trail Mix. Cody's here as well from the Road Department. This has been somewhat of a collaborative effort and process, an evolving conversation. So, for those of you, I guess you were all part of the council last fall. It's been a long day. So, yes. So, if you remember, during my budget presentation, in preparation for the 2018 budget, I had included a request for money to help Trail Mix purchase a new truck, because up to that point, Trail Mix volunteers had been using their personal vehicles to go design, build, and maintain our trail infrastructure. And as the Community now Economic Development Director, I didn't see that as a sustainable long-term solution for such a critical element of our local infrastructure. And so, the goal was to get Trail Mix a vehicle that could be used by Trail Mix employees and volunteers to go do the work that they do best. And during that process, it was suggested that rather than purchasing a vehicle, we lease a truck through kind of a similar program that the Sheriff's Department uses to lease their trucks. And so, that was the decision made on the budget. And in addition to that, it was suggested that rather than having that money come out of our department's line item budget, that we pull that money from the local option transportation, sales, and use tax money that does include active transportation expenditures as an eligible expense of that sales tax revenue. So, that was all well and good. Everybody's intentions were good, and I think everybody was supportive of the request. But unfortunately, as we explored the lease option further for Trail Mix, it became clear that that wasn't going to be the best option for Trail Mix, in particular because of concerns related to damage to the vehicle and the, you know, specifics of the lease agreement, right? And I think you can all imagine why it was expected that there would be some damage to the vehicles, you know, because these folks are working on basically dirt roads all the time that have variable conditions. And so, all that's to say is that we are now at the point again where we really need to get a vehicle for Trail Mix. Cody has been just an absolute rock star in trying to get Trail Mix outfitted with vehicles that we have in the fleet, but, you know, he can only go so far in terms of, you know, stringing vehicles along. And so, we've sort of cobbled together a system that includes an expedition. I can't remember where that expedition came from.
It was an old truck on the west end of another department, and it was utilized by the weed department.
And then it got to Trail Mix. And then, you know, that vehicle's had some challenges, and so there are ongoing costs to just trying to keep an old vehicle in use. Cody has also been. Cody has also been helpful in getting another, just a two-door truck that Trail Mix can use, either in combination with the expedition or when the expedition is out of commission. But I think it's really time that, you know, we start to sort of change the paradigm really about how we view Trail Mix. And I see Trail Mix as a driver of our local economy. I think that our trail infrastructure is an indispensable component of our, of our infrastructure and our local economy. You all know, you know, our trails generate millions of dollars in revenue for both the city and the county, as do our motorized trail infrastructure. But, but I think it's just absolutely critical that we enable Trail Mix to, you know, keep doing what they do best, which is to keep our trails in excellent condition. And so, here I am today to make a formal request to allocate $20,000 to purchase a used truck, four-door, half-ton pickup, four by four, that enables Trail Mix to get to where they need to go with the tools they need to bring and the volunteer crew that they, that they do work with. I would suggest that we pulled out from the local option transportation sales and use tax, but I don't know the specifics of that fund. So, I turn a little bit to Diana, but also, you know, accept that maybe this isn't going to be a decision tonight, but I really want to make sure that you're aware of this formal request. And my hope is that you also see the need and the benefit for it. So.
It is restricted revenue. I'm not entirely sure of restrictions on that. Probably a mental issue.
Well, we, I mean, we reviewed the information today associated with, it was HB 362, I think, that authorized it in 2017 or 2016?
Fifteen.
2015, yeah. Voted upon by our voters, and it is explicitly approving of expenditures associated with active transportation. That is the language used in the bill. So, I know it's an eligible expense. I don't know where, you know, what things look like with that revenue source because it's based on gas tax, right? Well, it's actually everything except for food, so.
And it's in the road department fund?
Right now, yeah. That is where we were looking at pulling the money from, for the lease option, so it's not too different, you know, from, from the approach that was recommended in the budget. And has Bill weighed in on it? We've worked primarily with Cody, so. Cody, have you had any conversations with Bill about it?
That was, that's kind of when you talked earlier. Do you guys want me to come up?
Please.
Sure.
Then you're on YouTube.
So, yeah, so I'm Cody McKinney. I'm the fleet manager for Grand County. I haven't had any formal discussion with Bill as far as this allotted money that's in this Grand County Road Department account, is that correct? And it's, it was the HB 263, is that correct?
I thought it was 362, but that could just be me mixing up.
So, yeah, and so the biggest, the biggest thing that my priorities are is just making sure that whatever Trail Mix decides to do with vehicles, if it becomes a county fleet unit, just that we're, that the county's going down whatever avenues it needs to, to where it's legal mostly, and that we're protecting the county's entities and fleet management wise. Yes, go ahead.
So, just to clarify, because Trail Mix is not a department of the county, it's an org, it's a committee that's established by resolution by the county council, it would be a Grand County fleet vehicle that is then checked out to Trail Mix following all of the fleet policies?
My concern is that $20,000 on a four-door half-ton pickup's going to get you a high miles pickup.
And that, and that's, that's exactly it, is that's.
Or a Ford truck, that's not.
Yeah. And so, and this is, and this is where, you know, the vehicles that we're using now, I mean, that's kind of the same thing we're using now. They're just vehicles that are already being kind of utilized that other departments have used. Depending on what comes up in the future with sheriff's office trucks, you know, we try to bring them out of the sheriff's department and utilize them in other departments as we've been doing for years and years. Right now, there's just, what's available is the expedition and the Ford truck.
So, we, you know, we thought that $20,000 was, you know, something that people wouldn't drop their jaw at because this is a first go, right, in terms of, you know, ramping up Trail Mix with a vehicle. I share the same, you know, concern. My goal would be to make sure that they are equipped for the long term. So, you know, I don't think anybody would, would say no to increasing that, but we also wanted to come in, you know, with a reasonable request, so.
How often do you anticipate Trail Mix utilizing this truck?
We work three to, three to five days a week, just depends on the week and volunteer use, so we will use this the majority of every working week. Dependent upon weather, of course, once winter hits, our crew scales down a little bit to primarily Matty and myself, who are kind of the new directors of it. And so, then it's really a matter of, you know, this winter, I worked for part-time through the whole winter, but the trucks will, the vehicle will definitely be used a lot. And right now, we're using, well, we were briefly using two vehicles because the one vehicle is a three-seater truck, which we have a five-person crew that we primarily work with, four people almost every day. So, that's why the expedition works well, but it limits us where we can go with it. And there's.
That's an SUV, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Or, yeah, the expedition. So, it does, it just limits where we can use it, and it, it increases the, the use on that vehicle.
So, you're only using fleet vehicles right now? You guys don't have your own vehicle?
Yeah, so in the past, we've used just personal vehicles because there was another employee who had a truck that was perfect, but he has retired, so Tyson has a van, I have Subaru.
Was he reimbursed for that?
For gas mileage.
But not for vehicle impacts. So, then that's another issue, is that that also then comes out of our budget, which is pretty minimal at this point.
I can't believe I'm saying this, but I don't think this is the solution for you guys. I mean, I, if you're, if you're doing the work that you're doing, having a high-mileage half-ton for your, you know, trail construction and maintenance is pretty scabby, you know? So, I, I would like to look at something different because it is, the work that you guys do is important for the economy, and I don't, I don't like the sound of that arm of the county relying on employee vehicles or high-mileage half-ton trucks. I would be in favor of looking at something different.
Like a higher dollar amount?
Great.
Yeah, I mean, if you're just asking for a four-door half-ton truck, what kind of truck were you thinking of? A Ford 150? Chevy?
F-150, similar to what the sheriffs use.
Okay. What about, what about smaller trucks from Nissan or Toyota or something like that?
I think the Ford came about because the county primarily uses them.
Okay.
That they're knowledgeable with that vehicle.
But they're also a lot more money.
Did you guys pull, like, the video, the presentation? Oh, that was Sand Flats, but no, that was Trail Mix.
They do.
So, you've got like a bobcat out on a trail. You got to pull that out there on a trailer, right? I mean.
Primarily for using machinery, it's the BLM. However, Trail Mix moving forward could definitely. I mean, that would also. Trail Mix has a trailer that it can pull to, you know, trailheads, and that contains, you know, equipment, but I think, you know, the longer, more remote trips are typically just the truck with tools.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't think that anybody here is attached to a specific make or model, but rather, you know, some minimal specs, right? Four-door truck, half-ton, cook or more.
Definitely look around.
Four-door.
Sorry.
Curtis?
Cody, don't you think these guys could make use of a, like, a lower mileage three-quarter ton for the kind of work they do?
I think they can. Like I say, my biggest concern is just making sure that whatever avenue we go down is just going to be legal and follow protocol, the budget, and pulling money out of wherever we're going to pull from. I'm not familiar with any of that. But yes, I mean, if, if Trail Mix moving forward is going to be, you know, a substantial thing, and, you know, eventually it could work into a crew of five or 10 people or more, I mean, they could definitely utilize enough two or three trucks in a situation like that. But again, yes, I mean, a three-quarter ton truck hauling tools and people is definitely going to be more utilitarian, especially if they're pulling a trailer with.
If we go from 20,000 to just say 40,000, that extra 20,000 is going to get you a more significant, capable truck with low miles. That extra 15,000 or 20,000 is going to end up saving the county money, I would think. $20,000 on a half-ton truck's going to be probably well over 100,000 miles.
Well, yeah, right around that for sure. Another avenue, if you are, if you, everybody's eyes are open to this, I mean, the lease trucks are a great, you know, value. The only issue that I have with the lease trucks is if they do happen to take the lease truck off-road and it gets damaged, then there would be, you know, it's like any.
I would just like to look at a three-quarter ton truck that's used with low miles, and I think that would best serve these guys.
If, if this is a fleet vehicle, would you be shopping for it then?
Well, yeah, I mean, Zach and I can, or Zachariah and I can sit down with Trail Mix's folks and, and put together a plan for, you know, what. But yeah, I mean, ultimately, that would be, I mean, I would be in charge of kind of trying to, you know, come up with the best suited need for them.
I'd just like to add that if it is in the budget, I would say that reliability is a major concern for us because we are.
Way up there.
To access some of these trails, we are going basically to the back country. So, yeah, having a vehicle that we can count on would be great.
And I forgot.
If anything used, you're going to have to repair what the previous owner did once.
I mean, can we, we've got three and a half million in the savings account. Can we just up the authorization for up to, you know, 35, 40,000 and give you the bandwidth to figure this out, get them a good truck that they'll have for a while? And I don't know why we have to tie this specifically to, I don't want to tie anybody's hands. They just need, they need a truck, they need a better truck, let's just do that. We don't want a brand-new, you know, $70,000 Ford, but we want a nice used Chevy. But a, but a capable truck. $20,000 is a money pit to me on a used half-ton. That's.
Yeah.
Would you like, you all make a motion?
Well, I guess that's a question is, so, this local option transportation sales and use tax, do we still need some clarification on that? Is that what I'm hearing? Or what, is there a fund balance there? Or someone help me out?
I can try to recall what Zachariah and I looked at today. We looked at the resolution. I remember it said, definitely said, Cody was with us too, active transportation and its infrastructure. That's what I remember. So, obviously, all these trails that they're building is infrastructure for active transportation.
So, Diana, I know that there was a projection for that sales and use tax for the 2018 budget. Do you know how that's coming in? Is it coming in about where?
Yeah, we're looking at that today.
And how much was it?
What is that?
I can't tell you. No, but it is coming right in. And there was, there was a line item to try, what we do, no, I should say what we would have done, is transfer the money from B Road into the Trail Mix paved path maintenance fund and then pay it out of there.
And so, in the B Road funds, are.
No, go ahead.
Jaylen?
In the B Road funds, is all of that money allocated already in their budget?
No. I don't want.
I mean, I guess I'd be, I mean, I agree with you. I think Trail Mix is awesome. They do great work, and they're very organized, they're, you know, they do everything they can to be self-sustaining, and I appreciate that. I'd probably feel more comfortable rather than just naming a dollar figure to give you the bandwidth to go out and find a couple of options to best deal in that meanwhile, we can be figuring out where the money's coming.
Yeah, then, yeah. State surplus is another option to look at.
Oh, that's, that was my other question for you.
Yeah, we, we do a lot with surplus, and there are some, we do a lot with surplus, and there are some pretty good options, you know, from other entities especially. Andy's not here anymore, but I know EMS, in the past, we actually purchased a couple of those F-250s from, like, Salt Lake County Sheriff's Department, and they had about 25,000 miles on them.
Yeah, that's.
And they basically get rid of, they basically are getting rid of those because they do, you know, a one to two-year plan on those to where they get, you know, 25,000 or 30,000 miles instead of a five-year plan where they're looking at 100,000.
So, what we're kind of looking at now is for them, you to go back and get a vehicle, find some vehicles that are going to serve you, and, and don't lowball it so much, and then come back to us with some options that are, you know, and we've kind of given you an idea of the amount of money to look at, correct?
Yeah, and I, if you look at a three-quarter ton, which I think you guys should, I would try to find a diesel because one of those big V8s or V10s, if you're just driving around and not pulling anything, it's going to be a gas guzzler. But I envision you guys, if you're growing and expanding, needing to haul equipment and things out, you should have a three-quarter ton so as to not beat that half-ton up, you know? I, that's my thoughts, but.
And seeing, and this, I'm not really familiar with exactly what they do. That's one of the biggest reasons I'm here, is I was hoping to gain a little more knowledge and, you know, and especially the, what kind of expansion we're looking here, because I can, I agree with you too. If this is something that's going to, in the next two to five years, is going to be, you know, they may need another truck, they're going to be hauling some equipment, looking at 10, 15 people instead of five or two sometimes, then, I mean, I agree, we need to look at it at a completely different perspective than, you know, hey, here's this little group of volunteers that's.
Even if it is volunteers, I think of, I think they, it just makes sense for them to, to be properly equipped, you know, to do their job, so.
I think we have our marching orders, so we'll come back. I just did confirm in 2015, it was HB 362. I got the number right. And I've got UAX explanation of it where it explicitly says the funds can be used for a number of things, including active transportation facilities like trails and bike lanes, so.
So, Diana mentioned state surplus, Madam Chair, but I wanted to say publicsurplus.com, which is what we use when we sell our surplus vehicles, is a good place to look. You can put in keyword, you know, your zip code and see what's available. There are a lot of things right there. It's basically eBay for public assets, so you can bid on it. Check that out, publicsurplus.com.
Is there other review that we need to do in terms of the non-department using the fleet vehicle just before we? We'll clarify that before we come back to you with a specific project. Yep, gotcha. That works for us, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm staying up here.
Okay, approving.
Do we need to postpone?
I'll make a motion to postpone a mid-year budget authorization for a Trail Mix truck.
A motion by Evan Clapper, seconded by Curtis Wells. All in favor of postponing? Passes five to zero.
I still don't know if I'm calling my name.
Thank you, Diana.
I thought you were like.
Okay, item I, approving bid announcement and expenditure for establishing budget allocations for a Spanish Valley Drive survey in support of the development of a multi-use pathway.
Okay, so, I could talk about this for a long time or keep it pretty short, and I'm going to keep it short. So, our office with support from the National Park Service's Rivers, Trails and Conservation Assistance Program has been working with a group of citizen stakeholders to start identifying considerations for the development of a Spanish Valley Drive multi-use pathway. It's an important component of our paved active transportation infrastructure. It's going to be increasingly important as we see population growth in the southern portions of Spanish Valley. We've held open houses where more than 50 residents showed up and expressed overwhelming support for the project. We have included the concept of a multi-use pathway in the list of possible projects to be funded by Recreation Hotspot Funding. We don't know what's going to happen with that just yet, or even if we get funding, you know, whether that project specifically is going to get some funding, so we are just proceeding forward as best we can. proceeding forward as best we can, you know, with some uncertainties, you know, out there and some additional opportunities out there. But it's very clear that the next step for us is to conduct a survey of the road corridor, which will basically drive the planning and design phase from there forward. We need to know exactly where the center line is, we need to know exactly where the property boundaries are, what the topographical issues are, constraints are, et cetera. And so, I'm here today just basically to get authorization to go out to bid for that survey. Informal estimates of what this could cost range from eight to 10,000 per mile up to 25,000 per mile, depending on, you know, the scope of work. And so, what I've said here is, let's go out to bid not to exceed 150,000, but it will be a competitive bidding process, so we will evaluate all proposals, you know, with cost in mind, of course. So, my understanding is that there is still money that is left over that's been carried over from 2017's budget specifically for the Spanish Valley Drive pathway, and so that's where the money would come from.
Evan?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve a bid announcement and associated expenditure from an established budget allocation for Spanish Valley Drive survey in support of the development of multi-use pathway and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Evan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion? Yes.
Two questions. So, within this five and a half miles, is it, I don't know how this survey works, but is it possible that one mile would cost differently than I have it? Just curious.
That is a good question.
Is it a hundred miles easier to survey?
Not so much in terms of like the, the actual imagery collection, but in terms of all the associated work, like, you know, property boundary research and conveyance, that's my phone in the back, sorry, conveyance history, you know, that will take longer for some stretches than others.
Then my second question is...
Can you take that for me, Joe?
For this one, five point five miles, given that, I know I shouldn't...
That's from the intersection of Spanish Valley Drive and Mill Creek out to the county line. I will remind you that we are, so basically, the full length of Spanish Valley Drive within Graham County. We are encouraging San Juan County to consider planning for and budgeting for an extension of that trail for an additional two miles towards the, to the Ken's Lake turnoff. We obviously don't have any control over what they do, so they are under, they've expressed support, and we'll just continue bringing them along with us.
I know it might be putting the cart before the horse some, but I know that there was some discussion about design options and rerouting away from Spanish Valley Drive at the hill, the truxius part. Would that, would it be worth including that in the bid plus, did that maybe an option?
Yeah, we could include that. So, in that segment, you know, take a look at additional corridors, yeah. Yeah, we could do that, so...
Any further questions?
Is that, you're understanding too that there's some funds from 2017 to carry over?
I will tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember, and then it wasn't used, so I remember we would budget it. So, yes, I would...
That's the, the established budget allocation referenced in the motion.
Any further questions? Seeing none, let's call for a vote. All in favor? Five to zero. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Zachariah, adopting proposed amendment to the consolidated fee schedule ordinance, Zachariah. Back up.
That's a good thing that came up next. Okay, so I don't have anything to add to the last presentation of this item since, since the presentation of the last April meeting. I have not received any written public comment until today, when I saw that there was one email in support of, in particular, the fees associated with nightly rental violations. I may be wrong, and that there may be others, that's the only one I've seen, so...
Have these guys seen that one?
I don't know, I just got it via email from Lisa.
Okay, as long as you guys saw it, normally, we would have it on the dais.
It came through the council's office, so...
Oh, at 3:00?
Oh.
Yeah, I saw one in support of...
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, I'm, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
I move to adopt the proposed amendments to the consolidated fee schedule ordinance and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Do I have a second? Greg Halliday, motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion? All in favor? Four in favor, Greg Halliday, Evan Clapper, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann, all opposed. All abstaining. One abstaining, Jaylen Hawkes.
Good thing we have enough council members.
Yes.
So, we will make this effective after the, after we notice to the public that this ordinance has passed. It'll be whatever that date is, depending on how fast we get a number and all that.
Okay.
So, it'll be in the next 10 to 15 days probably, effective date.
Okay, we are now moving to item K, appointing individuals to an ad hoc Moab Transit Authority Study Committee. Councilman Wells, and we do have someone from the public, Michael List.
Okay, so this is a, this is the agenda summary, I didn't get out late, so I want to just read some content from it for the public in attendance. "The Moab Transit Authority Study Committee shall serve as an ad hoc committee to research and propose a plan for the deployment of all transit-oriented development, transit facilities and transit vehicles, bicycles, and electric pedaleless bicycles necessary to serve the public transit needs of county residents and visitors to and within the Moab region. Section 10886 of Utah Code grants the governing body of any municipal authority to adopt a resolution to organize, operate, and maintain a system for public transit within the municipality. Grand County is located further than five highway or roadway miles of the boundary of an existing transit district. Therefore, as stipulated in Utah Code, the county is not required to seek consent of an existing transit district. Grand County wishes to encourage transit-oriented development as defined by Utah Code." Public transit is something that we've talked about and in some ways, we're kind of planning for. It's an issue that I've discussed with Judd Hill, our airport manager, and he has a public transportation need. I've discussed this at length with Zachariah Levine. Grand County citizen Michael List has been doing some work on public transportation and is really interested in having a vehicle or a group to contribute to that discussion. Emily Campbell, who's on the Grand County Planning Commission, has some transportation planning background. She's worked on the I-70 corridor, and she's really interested. The city of Moab reached out to me today and inquired about this, and so it's something that's just been really loose in discussion, and obviously, there's a lot of planning that needs to be done. But this just gives the county and members of the community an opportunity to start the conversation and ideally incubate what would be the future Moab Transit Authority. So, the, the needs are there, the opportunity is there, we need to crawl before we can walk, and this provides for that. So, the recommended motion that I have is to appoint Judd Hill, Zachariah Levine, Elaine Gisler, the travel council director, and Grand County citizens Michael List and Emily Campbell to the group, but it's meant to be, you know, an informal, ad hoc study committee with this specific purpose. So, if council members wanted to attend, of course, that's welcome. We have a member of the public that's also interested in participating in that right now, and then also, of course, members from the city, so this gives us something to get started. I don't know, Michael, if you want to add anything to that, please do, yeah.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Great. The idea man.
So, thank you for presenting the resolution. I'm sorry Rory's not here to keep track of my time, so...
I've got it.
So, what's interesting about this is that, I mean, I personally got involved when we were thinking about arches, and then the more I studied this, it's a much broader issue. I mean, so much, even when talking to Zachariah, if we can get a bus going down the valley, we can actually promote affordable housing because now we have stops, like in a city, you have the subway stops and around each stop is the affordable housing. So, it's a big topic, and, and for me personally, I'm very motivated to volunteer and get involved. But having a committee would actually give me the opportunity, for example, to go meet with Park City, meet with the mayor of Springdale, meet with the Roaring Fork Authority, because it would actually be like a government trying to do one of these things. Because as I see it now, we just need to get you guys information. I mean, we just spent 20 minutes on a vehicle, imagine a whole fleet of buses, you know, it's a big topic. So, I'd really like to do it. Just so you know, there is a Utah Code, and I discussed it with Ruth, it's the Public Transit District Act, Utah Code 17B2A8. So, there's a lot of state code related to this, and even this, the Trump infrastructure plan, what's interesting is it's from the Department of Transportation. My feeling is that there's so much money in this, and when I was looking originally, it was about a private public concessionaire partnership with a park. But there's a lot of money from the state level, from the federal level, and now maybe from this huge infrastructure fund. So, if we can actually come up with a, like, a program and a plan and how much money we need, and then money's available, we'll be able to access it. And the first part is process, and this happened since our UMTRA meeting. At the UMTRA meeting, I just want to tell you this story, and hopefully it won't run too long. The guy from the DNR came up to me, and he said, "I really need to talk to you." That's the mud person, you know, the sovereign land. And so, I met with them...
Tony, isn't it?
Tony Mancuso, yeah, and then his boss, and we met for like two and a half hours, and what I realized at the end of that is, we're not putting the parking lot on the UMTRA site. There's too many issues. And then I reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers, and then I reached out to the Matheson Wetlands Preserve, so I won't get into all the details because time's up, but there are so many issues where if we had a group like the Moab Transit Authority, we check off the box, did anyone speak to the Army Corps of Engineers, and that would have saved me a lot of time. But I did get to become good friends with Lee Shenton, so that was worth it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and this seems, I can totally support this moving forward. I was concerned about the UMTRA because I knew there were so many hurdles to pass.
Oh, my God, you have no idea now.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
But it was worth it.
Yes, Zachariah.
My sense is that there's a lot of support for this, so I won't take up too much time. I do want to just kind of piggyback on what has already been said, that in my research of gateway and natural amenity communities throughout the western United States, affordable housing and transportation are consistently identified as the top two challenges that these community types face. And transportation is so much of a challenge that, you know, the most advanced or mature or developed gateway natural amenity communities are spending a tremendous amount of money on trying to identify and implement transportation solutions, many of which go well beyond their municipal boundaries, you know, into two, three, four counties beyond their own, because that's the service area that they're, you know, basically pulling from in terms of employees and visitors. So, I just completely echo what has been said already, and that this is a really proactive, forward-thinking step in trying to get ahead of our transportation planning challenges. If you spent any time on Main Street or Fifth West over the weekend, I think you'd probably see firsthand how important it is, so...
That was wild. Yes.
I just had some questions about kind of the form that this would take and if, I guess that was the first.
So, when I discussed this with Ruth, we decided that just an ad hoc study committee was sufficient, and the references, this isn't a resolution, the references to code is just to kind of provide some framework for how this process becomes, as it becomes more and more.
I guess that, I mean, like Mike was saying, if this is going to be a voice for the county, you know, communicating with other entities, that...
Yeah.
I think we should have, I'm thinking we should maybe have somebody from the county council on the board, or on the committee, or at least sharing times going to it.
You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff filling that role, but I just didn't know if there was a, a need for, you know, bylaws and that sort of stuff, or if it was...
I think study committees could be, yes, go ahead. Study committees could be a lot looser, yes.
Right, that's how Curtis and I talked about it, was that as an ad hoc committee, it's, it has a temporary nature, so you wouldn't go to, it doesn't have to be open public meetings, it doesn't have to be, it's much like how they're, we used to call it the bypass committee, now I guess they call it the transportation committee, or your throttle-down committee. I mean, it's, it's people getting together for a stated purpose for a temporary amount of time, and so that's why we kind of thought a resolution wouldn't necessarily be in order, otherwise, we would need to do a different, perhaps a different board appointment process with public notice and...
This is, this is, I think, I like this.
Since it's temporary.
Well, they're, my, in my mind, this is a group to assemble information and to do some analysis, and then as it moves forward, maybe we do pass a resolution and create a more formal board for that. But as far as this study group acting in an official capacity, you know, out communicating with other entities, I just think, you know, within the nature of acquiring information and useful facts and data for us to do our own planning, and I don't see any harm in it personally, but... And the other thing too is, when we do add kind of that bureaucratic mold, sometimes it does kind of, it can kind of sap efficiency and productivity in some ways, and where there's all these ideas, like Judd's got a ton of ideas, and Zachariah's got a lot of ideas, and we have members of the community that are really motivated, putting time to it. I don't want to try to fit them into a box, I just want to let them get the synergy flowing and get some ideas on the table. So, that's, that's the reasoning for the ad hoc.
Yeah, I'm excited about it. Yes, Jaylen?
I guess my only concern is, first, let me say that I think this is a stellar ad hoc committee that's been put together. I've watched you work, you're a hard worker, you're an idea man, excited about that, I think you'd be excellent on this committee. I don't know Emily Campbell as well, but I'm sure she'll be great. I just wonder if we should put a call out to the community because there might be a few people that would say, "Well, God, I'd really like to participate in that." So, rather than prechoosing members, that would be my opinion.
Is to just have these members be the core group that begin and then open it up to the citizens to, you know, in case somebody else wants to come in and be part of the committee. Right?
And I just would like to say, that's why I'm here, because I have had several committees that I have worked on in transportation, and so I do have a track record, and I'm volunteering as a private citizen. And so, I'm meeting Jaylen's request because I saw it in favor, and here I am.
I think that's great. I mean, if we want to put out some kind of notice that, that we're proceeding with an ad hoc study committee, you know, for folks that are interested, I don't see any harm in that. And I also don't see any harm in just identifying talented and capable people and specifically inviting them to participate, it's all good.
So, do we need to make an amendment to the, or do we make a motion? I don't...
I didn't make the motion, but I'll make it now.
Okay, I, I think you started to, and then we got sidetracked.
I move to create a study group with a specific purpose of exploring public transit opportunities in Grand County and hereby appoint Grand County Airport Manager Judd Hill, Grand County Community and Economic Development Director Zachariah Levine, Moab Area Travel Council Director Elaine Gisler, and Grand County Citizens Michael List, Emily Campbell, and Joe Kingsley.
As well as putting a notice?
Yeah, and it...
In the paper that the committee is...
Including but not limited to those individuals, and then hopefully the paper.
Okay, that's fine.
Including... Including and not limited to. Okay, motion by Curtis, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Evan Clapper, seconds. Any further discussion?
I'm forgetting the woman's name, but who was the, she brought the gentleman from Salt Lake with the people mover trucks, the buses that he was all excited about? What was her name? I'm spacing out, I feel so bad.
Shirley?
Yeah.
Shirley?
Yeah. Can you guys get the word to her that we're putting this together?
I know.
Great.
Okay, yes.
Jerry was the one with the vehicles. I believe it's Shirley's work.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, great. Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Passes five to zero. We are now on L approving proposed response letter to Wayne M. Ashton and Black Oak Development Group regarding local affordable housing opportunity, Curtis Wells.
Just a quick correction, Black Oak Development Group.
Did I say, oh, what did I say?
He said oil.
Oil.
He's going to read between the lines on that.
Oh, because I was thinking of Freudian slip. I was saying, it was a man's cap.
So, we, we received a presentation from a private developer in a brief, but very optimistic PowerPoint, and the core elements of that were utili, his company to utilize manufacturing homes, and to have the county have utilities and infrastructure placed on currently what's county-owned property, and to work out some kind of a lease agreement. There's still a lot of questions to be answered. We do have a scheduled meeting of county staff to start to review that. He did mention some time sensitivity. It, it's one of these, in my opinion, I guess the way I'm approaching this is, is that how we decide if this is a, we've already decided as a county on numerous occasions that we need affordable housing, workforce housing inventory. There's a number of ways that that can be provided to the citizens. Public-private partnerships are a very effective way to do that. And our ability to analyze and subsequently make a decision on if Mr. Aston's proposal is good for both Grand County and the citizens, is that we need to review, do our due diligence on some of the bulleted items. In the letter, infrastructure costs, financial feasibility review, a lease agreement, and the potential for county incentives. So, I, I think it's something that we have to review. We haven't received a, a single project proposal since I've been in office, you know, in terms of a public-private partnership. So, it's something that we need to take serious. And ultimately, how we decide if it's a, a good deal, like I said, is to get into the lease agreement and the cost of doing so. Until, until we take a look at those things, it's hard to make a sound decision on whether this is a viable project. Because of the time sensitivity, I think it's important to get back to him and let, let him know that we are reviewing this. When I spoke to him after the last meeting, I instructed to him that it's going to take some time, and in the letter mentioned that, you know, we are trying to be conscious of that, but we have to, you know, perform our due diligence. The, the other two things I want to add is, is this land is sitting there being completely, I wouldn't even say underutilized, it's not being utilized. And in a perfect world, if the deal looked good, you could provide, you know, the way he, he found these units in, in an economic activity in South Dakota, they no longer needed these because supply caught up with demand. And so, now they're breaking them, they built enough apartments and condos and whatnot. Now, they're breaking them down, and they're affordable for him to purchase. And the same opportunity can happen here. If we could put these units up on land that we're just not using, cash flow the property, find a way to get infrastructure on it, which increases the value of the property, and contribute to the solution, or at least the, the short-term solution of affordable housing, that's a much better situation than we're in now, just looking at that vacant land and not having those units on the market. So, it's something that, you know, we do need to explore, and we're taking the measures to do that. I didn't prepare an agenda summary because it's pretty straightforward. So, I, with that, I would just make the motion that we approve this letter and send it to Mr. Aston at Black Oak Development, and authorize Ruth and her staff to just scan and email this to him tomorrow.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for some discussion.
Okay. A motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Evan Clapper. Discussion, Evan.
I appreciate that this letter leaves it really open-ended, and that it's not committing the county towards any action on our, our part. And I don't believe that it's misleading to just kind of say, "Hey, we need to, you know, look at the details to see what we're actually talking about here." I did have some questions for staff about if that would, if reviewing these costs and feasibility is doable in this time-sensitive manner, or the thoroughness of what might be accomplished, or what those internal meetings, you know, what process we're at with that.
So, real quick, because that's a good question. On one hand, we could begin working down this path, and his opportunity have slipped away. That's possible. But, I think we've got to get, as a county, into the habit of evaluating public-private partnerships and affordable housing on county-owned land, because where we're land-rich, we're cash-poor. And when another opportunity like this comes down the pipe, I don't want to feel like we're, we've never ridden a bike. And so, reviewing those pro formas, you know, huddling with like the building department, I just think it's, if we're, if we're begging for housing, we need to be ready for a deal. So, that's my opinion on it.
Yes, Mr. Halliday.
Yeah. From what I could see from his presentation, these are not homes, okay? So, we should not think of them as homes. These are more akin to barracks. And years ago, I lived in these type of trailers up in, up in Wyoming. They're temporary at best. These are not designed to be permanent homes by any means. So, that's something we need to consider about this. Like I said, they're more akin to barracks than what you would think of as a home.
Yes.
Just a little more before I put Zachariah on the hot spot.
Okay, another Zachariah question.
I think that, I think Curtis has a good point of, you know, we haven't been approached by folks before, and there's a certain degree of, you know, you don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, or, or, you know, the beggars can't be choosers sort of mentality. But, I also think that we haven't made it very public that we have this land that we're interested in these partnerships of developing affordable housing. And so, whether, you know, regardless of what kind of action that we take with Mr. Aston or with Black Oak, you know, if, if we're trying to put plans in place, I think it'd be worthwhile to have a similar track or conversation where we might be putting some more formal requests or asks from potential partners to say, "Hey, we've got this land we're considering of doing something with," because I, I don't want our actions in this particular opportunity to be too reactive, and to like, you know, get it now before it's gone.
Yeah, but, but, but get things in place so that we can move forward at a faster rate if something, you know, if this falls through, be ready for maybe another opportunities.
And, yes. And I know that you've, and I imagine a lot of this will come, a lot of these opinions or work will come from the Community Development Department. And I was just curious about, number one, working within the timeline that's been presented to us from Black Oak, and on a, a zooming out from a, look from higher above and trying to look at bigger picture, more options.
So, let me try to...
Sorry.
There's a lot that's potentially inspiring conversation. I agree with pretty much everything that has been said, you know, to, the majority of what's been said. I don't, I haven't been presented a formal timeline that needs to be adhered to in order for this opportunity to come to fruition. You know, I think I heard 60 days thrown out at one point. I can tell you with confidence, I don't, I don't think that we'd be ready in 60 days to sign a contract. I mean, I can't say for certain, but that would be, you know, extremely aggressive as far as I can tell. Do I think that our office can work through, you know, all of the material and information in a timely manner, as quickly as possible, while still doing a thorough and complete job? Yeah, this is, you know, definitely in our wheelhouse. And we have a meeting set up for May 7th, I believe.
I think it's May 7th.
May 7th, May 8th, something like that. And I think it's premature to say even, you know, the, the full extent of what we'll be considering. You know, we need to get together, huddle, and identify all of the important questions, all of the important points of consideration, and, and then it might be, you know, practical to say, "Yeah, we need a few months," or, you know, "This is a big undertaking, and there are a lot of really fundamental questions that need to be answered first." But, I don't, I don't have those concerns really about the timing. I think that, I share Curtis' sentiment, and that this is a really important exercise for us to go through. In general, I support public-private partnerships. I think it's important for the county to continue its evaluation of its land holdings. I know that both of the properties, the County Council of San Juan County, were, were appraised. You know, this is just, in, in some ways, the next step, right, in evaluating what is the best use of those lands is for the citizens of Grand County. So, I don't see any reason to just, to do anything but continue proceeding in a logical fashion, you know, and just commit to the process. I don't think anybody needs to be committed to a particular outcome, just commit to the process.
The dance that we're doing here is typically that urgency is, because before he purchases these units, he wants to have something secured in terms of where to put them. Otherwise, he either can't get, financing's not available, or they don't want to take the risk. So, on our end, that's his problem. But, we still have to do the due diligence anyways, and if we decide it's a good deal for the county, and it works out for his timeline, and he's able to secure himself on the back end, then, then that's good. That's a, that's a win-win. I, I do think, one thing I do want to say is, I think we are, we would be making a wise, conscious decision if we become more comfortable with public-private partnerships, and that if there's incentive for someone to make some money, and for us to generate revenue, but most importantly, provide some public utility, and in this case, housing, that's a really effective way to solve these kinds of problems. And I know it's kind of interesting when you have someone that's chasing a buck, come to the table because we're kind of public guardians. But, this is the process and how we determine, you know, if it's a good deal for the public, so...
Yeah, my, my biggest concern was that if there was a deadline or a really aggressive timeline, that we put a lot of energy into, you know, creating these lease agreements and options and contracts, just to, if it was not necessarily something we were in love with to begin with. But, I'm all for taking the next logical step in, you know, what to do with this, to create a plan for that, that land that we had assessed. And I think this letter by no means commits us to anything or any kind of timeline, and I'm all for keeping doors open and options on the table.
Thank you. Shall we have a vote? All in favor? Motion passes five to zero.
May of chair, quick question. Do you, so is the chair signing this letter? It just says the Grand County Council, and then also there's a typo, not a typo, but a date, would have been April 17th in that very first sentence.
Okay, so, we can make those changes?
Yeah, I, I sent the word document to Bryny, so she should be able to make that edit.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We are to item, item M, approving $315 of discretionary funds for payment to the DigiCert Incorporated in Levi, Utah, for a standard SSL security certificate for Four Corners Community Behavior/Health Database of the local homeless in service to the Grand County Local Homeless Coordinating Committee. I'm presenting this. You remember last fall when Jim Winder came, and we asked for the money to begin the process of creating this database? This is the final step. We have the database created, we have the agencies that will be involved in it. The agencies are Four Corners Behavior/Health, Interact, the Department of Workforce Services, Active Reentry, the Veteran Service, Utah Advocates for Recovery Awareness, Moav Solutions, HOSU, Housing Authority of Southern Utah, Moab Valley Multicultural Center, and Seek Haven. We only have two administrators, and that will be Active Reentry and Four Corners Behavioral Health. This is a program to assure that it is secure, and it's almost difficult to, you know, makes it more resistant to somebody getting into the database that shouldn't.
Motion to approve.
Any further, I need a second. Motion by Curtis Wells to approve the discretionary payment.
Greg seconded.
Greg seconded, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes five to zero. This is good news. Consent agenda items. Ratifying the Chair's signatures on a letter provided to Smooven, Rich, and Marcing in connection with the audit of the 2017 financial statements to Grand County. Ratifying the Chair's signatures on the Victim of Crime Act, VOCA Assistant Program Grant Application for this Children's Justice Center. Ratifying the Chair's signature on a grant application for the Recreation Trails Program Grant from the Utah Divisions of Parks and Recreations on behalf of Grand County Trail Mix Committee for Trails and Trailhead Maintenance and Restoration. Ratifying the Chair's signature on a non-federal reimbursement agreement between the Federal Aviation Administration and Grand County for purposes of providing commissioning of flight inspections and a special flight inspection at the Canyon-Anesfield Airport. Ratifying the Chair's signature on a proposed FAA grant application in the amount of $699,364 with a required local match of $35,000. Adopting proposed resolution approving Hammacher Minor Record Survey located at 1700 Murphy Lane. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Curtis Wells, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you. We are now moving to discussion of calendar items and public notices. Bryny.
All right, for your May calendars, this Thursday, May 3rd at 10:30, 10:30 is the Open and Public Meetings Act training, and that's going to be at the Grand Center. May 14th and 15th is the Governor's Energy Summit, and that is in Salt Lake City. May 16th is the council retreat, and that is, that's going to be at the hospital. Do I agree?
Council retreat is at the hospital. In fact, it's in education room number two.
Okay.
That's at nine o'clock?
Mm-hmm, nine to one.
Is, have we approved an agenda for that yet? Is anyone tasked? Have we tasked anyone with that?
I think Pat's doing that. He's just been distracted. I'm sure he'll get it to us before our 15th meeting.
I know it's about strategic planning. I mean, yeah.
Sounds like this is kind of more focused on budget.
Budget and...
That's all he's ever said, is strategic planning. Whatever you guys want it to be.
Well, maybe we could, one of us can get ahold of him and get like a draft agenda circulating, so everyone's got an opportunity to contribute to it.
Yeah, let's give him a week before we ask him to do that. I, you know, I would take it upon myself to email him on the Friday.
Okay.
To ask him to get us in the draft agenda, but we need to give him some time. Okay?
Okay, on May 17th at 1:30 is a Performance Review Committee meeting. Any takers? Somebody want to attend?
Pretty interesting.
I shall be our hotel.
May 23rd through the 25th is a Western Interstate Region Conference, and that's in Sun Valley, Idaho. And May 28th is Memorial Day, and offices will be closed. Any May, anybody?
Yes, the Housing Authority meeting's been moved from May 17th to May 24th at noon.
Now, did we get, we talked about not having the BLM meetings on the calendar, and then I think I do remember, did I get an email or something about that? Greg, how are you staying on top of that? Getting emails. Okay.
Email them and ask them to put Curtis on the list.
Okay.
Are they coming from Christina?
Christine.
I mean Christine, yeah. We're not getting anything on our end. We'd like to know too.
Christina Sloan, I'm getting it from her.
Why Christina, not Sloan.
Price, price, price.
Oh, that's right. Are those held at the same, I mean, the same like day or the same time every month of those?
Scanned.
Kind of, yeah. So let's have Christina get ahold of Bryny for sure and keep.
Yeah.
May want to reach out to her and inquire.
Okay.
The water board meeting, sorry, one more. Water board meeting has been canceled Thursday, the 3rd of May, but they're holding a special meeting tomorrow at 5:00. So, a little late for that one. And there's a training out there, right?
Yeah, it's the, I'll send it to the Open and Public Meeting Training.
Yeah. When is it, on Thursday? At the?
Grand Center.
And the state, I mean, sorry, the third-party auditors did ask us to see the sign-in sheet they want. They specifically look for council members to attend.
They do.
Yeah, more than anybody.
They'll even ask when it was mentioned in...
Meetings. When did you tell your board to go to it? So, yeah, it's important.
All right, for June calendars, June 2nd is the grand reopening of the airport, and that's at 9:30. And June 22nd is primary election day. And do you guys have any updates for June? Employment opportunities, county attorney prosecutorial assistant, that closes May 4th. EMT basic closes May 31st. Family support center crisis nursery worker closes May 11th. Assistant food service manager in the jail closes, that already closed, April 27th. Corrections officer closes May 31st. Patrol deputy closes May 31st, and communications dispatch also closes May 31st. And then next is just a flyer in regards to the 4th of July fireworks, so we are looking for extra crew as of Friday. Chuck Johnson with Vortex already has four guys, so if you guys know of anybody that would be...
How many more do they need then?
Four.
Four more?
Yeah.
Jim was going to ask, the fire department, they used to do it, helped a lot. So he's going to see if there was firemen that wanted to do that.
And last are special events, so May 5th Scott and Duro Cup, May 12th backup beyond paddle race, May 15th through the 19th Rally on the Rocks, June 2nd Thelma and Lee's Half Marathon, June 8th through the 9th Vision Relay, and June 17th through the 23rd Deserets Cocopelli 150.
Madam Chair, may I just say about Bryny, she's really been doing wonders with this fireworks display. Here we were with zero proposals, and so she's already met with the gentleman, I think he's from somewhere north, who had provided a proposal several years ago and just never won the bid, just because of, you know, a different bid. But he's come through, and she's met with him on side and just doing all kinds of stuff. She created the flyer to get it going, get the volunteers, or they're not volunteers, they actually get paid $10 plus lunch and dinner an hour. So anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge her for that.
Thank you, Bryny.
For all her work. That's only a small piece of the whole process. It's involved, so, anyway. Looks like we have a company who's very dedicated to doing this.
Good.
Okay, we have a brief discussion on overview of recommended fleet policy updates and subsequent council approval process.
I guess that's me, huh?
Yeah, Cody, you are here. Everybody's left you.
I know, boy, nobody wants to talk about policy and procedure.
Even the press, whatever, because I've never seen that.
All right, let's get down to the nitty-gritty, huh? So, did you guys get a chance to kind of, I don't know how long you've had your packets, did you guys get a chance to kind of look through over the revisions that were updates? And so...
And if I may, on the dais is the agenda summary, so, regarding this. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, just kind of a background, and it says right on the agenda summary, the policy and procedure was passed by resolution number 2838 on 7/15/2008. The document is in need of updated current information and changes to enhance the employee handbook and fleet policy uniformity for future reference. So, working with the SARC, which is the Safety and Accident Review Committee, everybody's fairly familiar with that committee, and then also the leadership committee, we've, I myself, the committees, and then Ruth and I took it upon ourselves for about the last, what, three or four months?
Just the two.
To just kind of beat this down and really get some objectives of the overview changes, reassessing the definitions, the whole document, we basically went through and have modified for the current changes and updates. The tightening up wording, and then, I don't know if I'll be involved with it, but possibly with kind of the rewrite of the employee handbook also. What we tried to do was pull a lot of the fleet type jargon and verbal out of the employee handbook and move it into the fleet policy, to where if you get a volunteer or somebody that may not even be ever driving, they won't have to read an entire document on fleet if it's not even going to relate to them. So we're just trying to make it, looking forward, you know, trying to have a little bit of a vision on where we're going with some of these documents too, to where they'll work together, but you can also separate them out to where it's not such a vast document. Do you guys, I mean, do you guys have any questions, concerns, comments? The biggest thing, I think, and Ruth, you may chime in any time too, I think the biggest thing we're looking for with this is just, we want everybody to understand kind of where we're going with it, but also, I mean, there's still some work that needs to be done with this. I mean, we got to get everybody on the same page with this. It's going to have to go through legal before anything, I mean, these are, we're still in the, we're not in baby steps anymore, but we're, we're trying to make sure everybody's on the same page with, so we don't have to do this again for another 10 years. Maybe.
Any questions?
So I'm assuming it will come back to us?
Well, so what we're kind of, what we're wondering from you guys is if, I don't know if you guys want to do, I mean, as far as understanding the body of the document, if you guys need to want to do some workshops, I can keep my schedule open if we did need to meet with questions, concerns, comments, changes. I mean, we're kind of just putting it out to you guys just so.
I would like to give staff, you're the ones that know the most about this, you're most familiar, so I'd like to all look through and then if it comes back to us, I'm happy to review the final product.
I mean, you could, we could present this next time, and you'd just vote on it, but we thought you'd want to go through it. It's use of county assets, you know, vehicles, and it hasn't been updated in more than 10 years or about 10 years, so. When we did the employee handbook, we did it workshop by workshop. It took a while, and it was paragraph by paragraph. You could do, you could just have it as a discussion item each meeting and limit it to 10 minutes, or you could just, it's really up to you, but it's a very important policy that may not get updated for another 10 years. So we want to be sure it's solid. But yeah, the Safety and Accident Review Committee, which is, I don't know, about eight or nine of us, we've really looked at it thoroughly over the last, I'd say, it's been two years now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then the leadership team looked at it and gave us some, so I mean, it has definitely been vetted. It's in good shape, you know, from staff's point of view, but you guys are the legislative policymaking body, and so, yeah, we want to know what your process, how you would like to see a process going forward, so that we can get something adopted by you guys. What's comfortable for you guys?
It's already been through the Safety and Accident Review Committee.
Yeah, the Safety and Accident Review Committee meeting, we started working on it, I started personally working on it in March of 16, and then brought it to the Safety and Accident Review Committee meeting just a couple of months later after I went through and really pulled, I mean, this is actually the original document here, and it was, it was about 13 pages, a lot of defensive driving stuff that was five years instead of two years, you know, I went through and mostly just cleaned it up to where it was the, just everything related to the current county standards and policies and procedures, and then also pulling a lot of the fleet regard out of the employee handbook and putting it in the new, you know, the actual fleet policy document, to where, like I say, if an employee, a volunteer or someone that's never going to drive, doesn't have to read a 20-page document of fleet because they're never going to be involved in it. So, yeah, I mean, it went through the Safety and Accident Review Committee, we worked, we've been working on it for the last couple of years, Ruth and I, about four or five months ago, four months ago, we really dove into it by ourselves and really just bounced it off each other, cleaning up bullet points, cleaning up definitions as far as, you know, what authorized operators are versus employees versus county-assigned vehicles versus county general fleet vehicles, just really going through the document page by page, word by word, and cleaned it completely up, brought it back to the Safety and Accident Review Committee, and we looked at it. They basically were on board with everything that was going on. We presented it to the leadership, had a few minor, just really minor details about, mostly just super simple little things that were just a little confusing, we tightened the wording up on that, presented it again, and didn't really get any more feedback from the leadership, so here we are with you guys.
So are there questions or areas of concern that...
There were a few, those that stayed yellow highlighted, there were a few.
Yeah, if you, if you look on the overview of changes, the kind of, I don't know if yours is red, white, and blue, but the very last bullet says the following areas were intentionally left unfinished for input from leadership, and it was kind of the changes to responsibilities because the job descriptions may change again, page 17. The state inspection law, which, we're going to kind of leave that wording the same, even though the Utah safety inspection kind of is out of the wayside now. From a fleet management standpoint, we're going to leave that wording alone, just to hold a little higher criteria than just, oh, when the brake starts squeaking, bring it out, you know, or when the battery goes dead, call us type of stuff. So we still have some, kind of some safety practices to follow in place. And then, you know, of course, best practice, following fleet procedure through communication with myself or the fleet manager, whoever that may be in the future.
If I could just add to that, the section on authorized, or county-assigned vehicles, you know, some staff have county-assigned vehicles. So tightening that up, I think we would want your input on that. You know, who gets them, who doesn't? Definition of a preventable accident, what's preventable, what's non-preventable? Because the resolution you've adopted that says the, that authorizes the Safety and Accident Review Committee to make decisions, part of their decision-making is based on what is considered preventable and what's non-preventable, and therefore, recommended actions that the committee gives to the supervisor who's dealing with the accident. You know, each month, there are accidents. It's not, we have them, we definitely have them, and the, this committee deals with them. So we want to be sure that we're using the kind of definition for preventable or non-preventable that you all would want. So those are a couple of things that I just thought of.
They're the things you really want us to look at and look at.
I mean, yeah, and you all could have set up a study committee if you wanted to do that, I don't know. I mean, maybe I'm making a bigger deal out of it, but it's just one of those documents that's extremely important, in my view. So it's not a rubber stamp, in other words.
Well, it sounds like we already have a study committee.
Well, you definitely have, from staff's point of view, which is very important. I mean, I would agree, but we're not going to, we don't see it the same way you do, and so...
Well, and that's why I'm saying, I am happy to have a, if it's ready to come to the council, let's put it on the NAC agenda and put it up.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, if there are some bullet points that are like, should it say X or should it say Y, then, you know, could maybe review those, but I don't feel like we need to recreate the wheel of like, what should it say under this whole topic? You know? There's obviously been a bunch of work into it, and I don't want to break apart and start from scratch, but...
Perfect. Great, thank you, we'll do that. Thank you.
You, my Ruth.
So it'll be higher on the agenda next time.
If it, I mean, like, do you have this document ready in midweek or something next week?
It's ready now, it was in your packet.
So this is what you will be sending to the council? All right, then, I just assume we read it sooner, rather than when we get the next package, because who knows how long that will be?
I suppose we could do a clean version of that, that's really redlined, but...
I mean, like you were saying, there's areas that were intentionally left unfinished, and so it sounds like there's just kind of like three little, or not little, but three things that just need to be buttoned up.
Yeah, well, and the biggest thing is like, number two, the state inspection law, I mean, how do you guys feel about leaving, you know, because it's going to be eventually in another decade, when safety inspections in Utah haven't been around for 10 years, people are going to read it and be like, what's a safety inspection, why, or what's this criteria that is based off Utah safety inspection? You know what I mean? So I don't know if there's a verbiage or something that would be better than just the state inspection law, you know, we're going to adhere to the safe state inspection law, you know, with regard to these and these and this, and, you know, all the different 300 points that, you know, that had to deal with. Number three, that's kind of what the best practice is for following fleet procedure through communication with the fleet manager, myself, or whoever the new fleet manager may be. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, and I think Ruth's, and I think everybody's intention is to set this document up to where in 10 years, it's as good as this one has been over the last 10 years. You know, something that's going to be kind of tried and true, and we're not going to be in a couple of years saying, well, that didn't really work, now we're going to fix that and maybe come to you guys again and go to legal again. So I think that's why Ruth's stressing that we don't want to mess up. So I think that's why Ruth's stressing that we don't want to mess up. So, but it really is, Jalen, it really is, it's done. I mean, it really is, other than the, the biggest thing and probably is just the changes in responsibilities because the job descriptions may change again, and I don't really know where we are with the, I know the job description, I know we were going through that, I don't know where we stand with that. I don't know how much it's really going to affect this document as far as responsibilities, because there's a section in here, if you look through, there's, there's actually, on page 17, it begins with me, and it goes down through insurance coordinator and everybody. You know, the county fleet manager, basically my responsibilities in bullet points, this is what that job, according to the fleet anyway, with regard to the fleet, this is what those responsibilities are. So I don't know how, if the job descriptions change or have a twist, how it would affect the actual, and I don't know what it would take to make an amendment to that too, you know, in just a job description. And I'm just confusing everybody.
No, I, I mean, on that, on that safety, safety issue inspection thing.
The state inspection law?
Yeah, if you want to leave it the way it is now, or do you want to add, ensure that all fleet units comply with the state inspection law, if any.
Well, and I think that's actually...
Because there isn't one now.
Yeah, it says ensure that all fleet units would comply with state, and actually, that's, Chris Kaufman had mentioned something like that, putting in kind of just a...
If any at the, at the back, so in case something comes in the future, you won't have to redo it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd just leave it to the state law right now, it's theirs to stay on. I don't know, you have to clarify.
I don't want people running around trying to figure it out if there isn't one, wasting time trying to do something.
Yeah, but yeah, I think that we could definitely finish that out to where it's more open-ended, to where it...
Because that, that has the states now, it says that you will comply, but...
There's nothing to comply to.
But, but if any at the end.
Yeah.
There is a, you'll do that. Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys did a lot of work. Thank you.
I feel like we probably be ready to see it.
Yep. What I can do is send out a clean version right away, because you guys are having to look at a red line.
Yeah, like, yeah, if there's something you want particular attention paid to, highlight it. I move. We, can we do that?
Yeah.
We're in the closed session to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of the individual.
Jalen moved. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Evan Clapper seconds. Jalen Hawkes moved. All in favor? Curtis? Okay. All five to zero, we will move into closed session.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
It's on next time.